Good morning. Today is Tuesday, September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty. It is nine AM. This is a regular meeting of Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon?
Here.
Craig Peterson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Hey, all five members present, we are ready to conduct business today. At this time, would all please, would you all please rise for invocation from Andrew Cromwell from the twentieth church. One, Andrew.
Good morning. Let's pray if you'd bow your heads. Lord, today we're, we begin this meeting with a call out to you. And I'm reminded of what David prayed in the thirty first Psalm. He said, he said, "Lord, I run to you. I run for dear life. Don't let me down. Take me seriously. You're my cave to hide in. You free us from hidden traps. I put my life in your hands. You'll never let us down." And, and Lord, I pray today that prayer, that today we run to you, we confess our needs from you. Our best strategies pale in comparison to your wisdom. So today, God, we pray that you would direct our steps. We ask that you would guide our decisions, that you would reveal any hidden pitfalls and traps that lay before us. Show us the way today, we pray. We're asking for favor. We're asking for your blessing. We're asking, God, for this board and their staff, for every county department head and all of their staffs, all of those that are within our county borders. Lord, today be merciful to us and show us the way. And it's in your great name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. Follow me in the flag salute, please. Ready? Salute. Okay, at this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed. And on the line right now this morning, we have Fire Chief Bill Lynch. Billy, there's one. There you are.
Yes, I am. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to give your board a quick update on the out-of-county response that we've been providing to the state and the wildfires. All of our people are either back or on their way back. However, we anticipate them being sent back out probably by tomorrow to the Glass Fire, which is Northern California. This fire started Sunday. It's burned in excess of about thirty-six thousand acres and it's zero percent contained. So it's, it's blowing up up there and, and we anticipate we're going to send probably at least two strike teams out, probably as early as tomorrow afternoon. We currently only have two people assigned, excuse me, one person assigned to the Creek Fire as a, as a radio operator, communications operator. And, and, and she is actually at the Creek Fire. And we have our dozer again on standby in Fresno County, since all cow fire resources are being sent north. So I just wanted to give you that quick update. Everybody should be home today. And we do have a vast majority of them home, but everybody should be home safe and sound. And we're preparing for the next wave, which could come as early as next win, or tomorrow, actually.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the line with their hand up? Nobody? Okay. We'll move on now to approval of the minutes from September twenty second, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting. So move.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Peterson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Okay, five have voted in favor to approve the minutes as presented. And we'll go on now to the consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are enacted by one motion unless the supervisor would like to pull on one of the items and vote on it separately. What is your pleasure?
Who is presented, Mr. Chair?
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll go on now to regular agenda items. And the first item is County Council, and it's, I believe, Carrie Woolley is going to be on the line.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor. How are you, or Mr. Chair? Sorry, Supervisor Verboon.
Good morning. How are you today?
I'm fine, thank you for asking. I've never appeared before you guys on WebEx. It's a very different experience. So today I'm before you with a proposed letter in support of Senate Bill four, four, three, one. It's our Emergency Wildfire and Public Safety Act of two thousand and twenty. As it says in the agenda item, it is a bipartisan bill that will help communities better prepare to respond to wildfires by providing more resources. Specifically, what it's providing is it's going to provide some money for the public, for private entities to clear dead and dying trees. It will also help to fund the Forest Service to reduce wildfire risk. As we all know, the national forests make up the majority of the open land throughout our state and throughout the nation. So when we're getting these horrible wildfires, those are usually on national land or at least partially on national land. And they will also, it will also fund measures to better detect wildfires to allow people to pack up and leave early enough to save their lives and their possessions. And with that, I will submit the proposed letter. I do have two small changes. Yes, two small changes. These are to reflect the current numbers as of last night on cow fire. The wildfires have consumed over three point seven five million acres in California, and they have destroyed more than seven thousand six hundred and thirty structures. And with that, I will submit.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Peterson.
Sure. I, uh, thank you, Carrie. Just some questions in the broader context. This is a very, um, uh, small excerpt from the bill. And I just wonder, in the broader context, I see it's bipartisan and, and, uh, but I just don't want to get caught in the broader context of this bill, um, you know, and this whole climate change, you know, phraseology. I mean, I've lived through acid rain, global cooling, global warming, and now the catch-all climate change. And is, is that in this, in the context of the bill anywhere?
I did not see that phraseology. What I saw was the phrasing of Healthy Forest Restoration Act. And it actually reads to me, at least, more of a bill to better manage our national forests and to assist the people who live near them or who live in them with better able, better to be better prepared to handle the wildfires that happen just as a force of nature, whether it's global warming, whether it just happens to be a particularly hot year, dry year, or, you know, even other events that can happen in that. It does not seem to be, at least to me, and I did read the entire bill, political in the sense of it being about global climate change. It appears to be more of about taking better care of our land and being a better steward of our land.
Great. And where did the request come from?
The request came from Chairman Verboon.
Through?
Through Senator Feinstein's office.
Yeah, her office reached out to me several weeks ago and asked if we would support this bill. I said, well, we'll look at it, let the council look at it. And I had Chief Bill Lynch look at it as well, make sure we weren't caught up in some political game. So I think it, it does well by the people by allowing them to get funding to remove all trees near their homes in the forest and allows them to, to protect their, their property as well. So I had Carrie, Carrie look at it. And Bill, you want to, want to add anything on this at all?
Yeah, I could just say that it does, it, it appeared to me there was no global warming implications, but it, it does do right by the national forest. Allows them to go in and, and provide funding for people to clean their properties up. And I think the, um, the, the effects for our agency would be possibly less fires in the national forests, which would make, make it so that our people wouldn't have to go out and, you know, risk our equipment and lives. So I, I, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I, I agree. I mean, I, I'm all for managing forests. I just don't want to get caught up in, you know, political phraseology and verbiage and, and doing the right thing and, and do the wrong thing at the same time. So those are my questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I was concerned too. They were really hard pressing me on it. I'm like, well, you know, it's a bill, let's look at this, look close at it and see what we can do. And it doesn't hurt our county. It helps us and helps people that live in the forest, so.
Yeah, the, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the only shortage I see is it talks about forestry jobs, but it doesn't talk about logging jobs. And part of forestry management talks about logging. And this bill is somewhat absent of that discussion. This, this will have government paying for logging then. Granted, it needs to be done. The, the, the material and the fuel needs to be removed. But for centuries, that was done through the logging operation, and this doesn't support the logging. And that's the only.
Yeah, and I think, I think the way it is done is so if you own a house up there and you have three or four dead trees from the bark beetle in your yard, it allows you to find funding to get those removed from your property.
Right. No, that, that's what this does.
I know I went to my, my neighbor had a house up there and it was just, it was a beautiful place. It had these big trees in the yard. It was just so dark all the time. All the trees are dead. All they have now is the piles of wood and the stumps. They can't afford to get anything else removed. So this allows them to find some funding to help that out, so, and protect their house from another hundred years.
Yeah, but logging would have been able to handle that with a revenue stream. This project is all expense. So that's, that's the only shortcoming that I see in legislation.
And I think Supervisor Nevs makes an excellent point here. The logging industry does do an excellent job at clearing out the forests of debris and helping to manage all of the detrors on the floor that does become essentially just the, the, uh, the fuel for forest fires. This bill is trying to get to the edges of that, so the areas that are closer to people's homes. As Supervisor, as Chairman Verboon points out, the areas where the logging companies aren't doing business, that sort of thing. And as we all know, it's Congress, so it has to be something that they're going to have to be able to compromise on. The logging industry, I don't think was involved in this at all. It didn't read that way, at least to me.
Yeah, and that, and that's a concern to me because the logging industry, again, for centuries has taken care of the forests and done a great job, and this bill is.
Yeah, I, I would, at the least, Mr. Chairman, move the table this until next week so we could get broader information. I know, you know, CSAC has a good membership of forest-based counties and management, and they're going to understand this. I want to make sure that, that, you know, it's a healthy exercise in, in covering all issues related to forest management. So with that, I would.
I didn't check with RCRCC. See what they said on it. So maybe you can do that. Yeah. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to add to the discussion, you know, there's recently a twenty-year study done, I think by, I was, uh, I want to say Berkeley, but I could be wrong. It's a twenty-year study tracking legislation that's going through DC. And at the end of the day, you know, we, we can have a conversation here at the local level. It's good. It's healthy. But the reality is, the study showed that whether a bill had a massive amount of opposition to it or a massive amount of support behind the bill, and you guys probably heard about the study too, it didn't matter. It had the same chances and odds of passing to be signed by the president. And I want to say it was below twenty-five percent. So when you think about that, you know, whether this bill has support or opposition, it has the same chance of passing. So what that study is telling you, once it gets up there, the people, the common people, us, the taxpayers, we have no say-so in legislation and, and what's passed in DC. So who does that leave out? Leaves the special interests, the third house, the money and the, um, the big money. And so I have no problem just, not even just tableing it, but just getting this off our agenda. It's not going to matter anyways. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can we?
Motion to the table right now.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, we have a second by, uh, a motion table by Supervisor Peterson, second table by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor to table, and Supervisor Peterson will bring it back next week after he touches in with CSAC and RCRCC. Me or? All right, we'll move on now to item B, Fire Department. Bill Lynch. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Um, I'm here this morning to ask your board to consider the appointment of Mr. Steve Alonso as the interim Assistant Fire Chief with the Fire Department. Chief Alonso has extensive years in the fire service, twenty-eight with this agency. Most recently retired as a battalion chief with the Training Division from this agency just a mere year and a half ago. Steve had, Steve's knowledge of the agency, its needs, its wants, and its people are what make him the candidate for this job. I, I, I think he would, he, he will do an excellent, excellent job. The people like him. He's a people person, and I think that's what we're looking for right now in this period of transition. So I would like to ask you and your board to authorize the advanced step higher of Mr. Steve Alonso as an extra help Assistant Fire Chief and set his salary at range two, six, zero, at step five. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the Chief?
So movement, Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
We have voted five in favor. Thank you, Chief, and, uh.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Steve Alonso, uh, uh, good luck, and we wish him all best, and, uh.
He'll be in charge, he'll be in charge of the Operations Division. He's got his hands full right now with all this out-of-county wildfire stuff. So it's, it's, uh, big times now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on. Item C now, Human Resources. We have Hanny this morning? Or Melissa?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you guys hear me?
Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. Melissa Avalos, Personnel Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today regarding the revised job specification for the classification of Family Resource Coordinator as well as the new job specification for the Senior Family Resource Coordinator. The Parents' Teachers Program is utilized in the Public Health Department for the early childhood development, parent education, family support, and school readiness home visiting model. The Public Health Department requested that Human Resources revise the job specification for Family Resource Coordinator due to an updated and approved curriculum for the classification. The update, the updates include a change to the minimum qualification, a new certification requirement, and probationary period. Revisions to the duties, knowledge, ability, and work environment were also updated to align with the current functions of the job, which include home visitation. These changes were necessary in order to develop the new job specification for the Senior Family Resource Coordinator. The Senior Family Resource Coordinator will provide lead supervision and training to the Family Resource Coordinators while also carrying a portion of the caseload of home visitations. There's no fiscal impact as the allocations were included in the department's current budget. Therefore, HR recommends that you approve the revised job specification for Family Resource Coordinator with no change in salary, and approve the new job specification for Senior Family Resource Coordinator and set the salary at range one eighty-three point zero, which is approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars to four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars monthly. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Melissa. Uh, any question or comments? Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Hey, Melissa, five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to item D, Public Health Department. And I think we have Nancy here this morning.
It's Nancy Gerken.
Morning, Nancy. Hello?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yeah, Nancy?
Nancy.
Nancy, you got a really bad echo. We can't understand what you're saying. So do you have two devices on or just one, or?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
We're trying to figure out. Yeah, I just hear the echo.
Yeah, it's a real bad echo. It's like you're in a, in a cave.
All right, let's, let's go ahead. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Nancy Gerken.
Okay, that, that's a little better.
Continuation of a contractual relationship. We're trying to figure out what I got a problem.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. This is a continuation of the contractual relationship between President Pacific University. Nursing students to gain educational field experiences with the Health Department in the field of public health nursing and healthcare-related programs. As a public health agency, nursing and clinical staff will assist the students during their scheduled allotted time in the Health Department. Kings County has a contractual relationship with President Pacific University for this nursing student internships for several years. As noted in the agenda item, there is no cost associated with the recommended action, as neither party shall be obligated to provide any monetary compensation to the other as a result of this agreement. This agreement is for educational field experience only. This is a three-year agreement spanning July two thousand and twenty through June two thousand and twenty-three. It is the recommendation of the Kings County Health Department that this board approved this agreed, agreement retroactive to July first, two thousand and twenty. This agreement has been approved as deformed by County Council. Are there any questions I might answer?
Thank you, Nancy. Any question or comments for Nancy?
Questions, Mr. Chairman, production?
Moved by Supervisor, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor who approved that presented. So thank you again. We'll move on now to Administration.
There was one other item under, hell.
Second item.
Oh, sorry. Consider, okay, item two on, D two on Department of Public Health.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Nancy Gerken again with Kings County Department of Public Health. I am here requesting this board authorize the waiving of the eight-dollar administration fee for the state provider flu vaccines offered to all Kings County residents. Each year, the Health Department receives a lot of approximately twelve hundred flu vaccines from the state of California. The state provides local health department vaccines free of charge to mitigate emerging flu season illnesses. The conditions of the Centers for Disease Control grant requires all local health departments to establish beverage for vaccinating or dispensing medications to all residents within forty-eight hours of receipt. Last year, the Health Department used the state-provided vaccines at stand-up point of dispensing pod, flu clinics in Kettleman City, Avonale, Porcren, Lemoore, Strafford, and a large drive-through pod in Yampu. Last year, the Health Department returned over six hundred unused flu vaccines to the state. The COVID nineteen pandemic prevents the Health Department from holding pods. To increase the number of vaccinations, the flu vaccine will be administered during flu clinics scheduled at different dates and times. Further, the Health Department is planning to administer the vaccine by appointment only at school immunization clinics and to partner with existing COVID nineteen mobile testing sites. The most up-to-date flu vaccine clinic schedule will be posted on the county webs, website. Waiving the eight-dollar administrative fee may result in a lost revenue of approximately seven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Vaccinating residents for free advances the Health Department's goal to vaccinate as many Kings County residents as possible by removing the cost barrier. It is the recommendation of the Kings County Health Department that the board waive the eight-dollar administrative fee for flu vaccines offered until all the state flu vaccine are used up. Are there any questions that I might have?
Any question or comments? You guys want to get your flu shots? I have it down there, but one needle to fight this all in like three or four minutes.
Saves a lot.
Saves a lot. I'll go first, just, you know, just real quick.
Yeah, thanks. So movement, Chair, and just one little question. I did go get a flu shot already at Walmart already, and they have an.
Do you want your eight-dollar back?
Yeah, exactly. Can I get my COVID? Uh, they waived the COVID. They have a neat bandage that you give the injection through the bandage, and it seals it. And I did send the clerk the link, and just a neat little innovative deal. They show putting that bandage on a, on a, on a balloon, giving the injection into the balloon, pulling the needle out, and the balloon stays intact.
Nice.
And really, really a neat, innovative idea. So with that, Nancy, thank you very much. Good luck.
You're saying, you're saying that you got a shot with a Band-Aid and then none of the hot air came out.
Correct. Exactly.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll second that with just clarification. Did they say that, uh, that they will? I heard her say by appointment only on the shots, but they will partner up with the various mobile COVID vaccines. They'll come out?
Nancy, you'll, you'll team up with the COVID, uh, testing as well?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
A motion by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Valley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on now to Item E, Administration. Rebecca Campbell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, under the provisions of the California State Association of Counties Constitution, members of the Board of Directors and Alternates, alternate, alternate, excuse me, check this off, are elected by their respective boards at their counties for a one-year term commencing on the first day of the CSAC Annual Meeting. The CSAC Annual Meeting is scheduled to begin November 12, actually, through the 19th, and this year will be the first year that it'll be held virtually. And registration is open for your board, just to let you know that as well. Two vacancies exist for our county on the CSAC Board of Directors to represent our county, one regular member and one alternate for 2020. The term is for one year, and I would ask your board that you laypoint a primary director to the CSAC Board of Directors and also appoint an alternate director to the CSAC Board of Directors.
Thank you. Any question or comments? Supervisor Peterson, you still like doing that?
It's easy now, by phone.
Yeah. I'm tied up for the meeting on the 12th and 19th too, so I nominate Supervisor Craig Peterson as Chair. What's your title? Representative?
Well, Ms. Chair, if you allow me to make the motion, I'll take care of two and nominate Sue Peterson as the primary and Chairman Verboon as the alternate.
And we have a motion to prove as presented.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Neves. Motion by Supervisor Valley, second by Supervisor Neves. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. We approve Supervisor Peterson and Supervisor Verboon as representative for California State Association of Counties. And now we're going to do an urgency item, and let's take Carrie's up here.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Carrie Martinez. So, on September 14, 2020, your board held the public hearings for fiscal year 2021 budget. State budget updates were delayed due to COVID-19. Therefore, the county delayed its normal budget hearing cycle to ensure we incorporated any changes from the state budget. Typically, hearings are held in August. This year, we held them in September. The hearings were held, and the board directed staff to bring back a final budget resolution. Due to oversight, the item was not placed on the agenda. Therefore, it is included today in order for the county to meet the state comptroller's deadline of the budget submission by October 2, which is this Friday. Budget hearings were opened by your board. During those budget hearings, your board gave a temporary due pass to all budget units with no changes in directive staff to bring back the final budget resolution. The attached resolution presents the budget by appropriation of funds. All appropriation of governmental funds are at $393,853,059, and total means of financing are at $393,853,059, meaning we have a balanced budget. And contingency by all funds are at $25,240,057. If there are no additional questions, we respectfully request your board to adopt the resolution approving the final fiscal year 2021 Kings County budget.
I want to give your board an update that we're still working with the developers on the third-party software for the budget detail reports. We're thoroughly auditing those to make sure they are correct, and we're pretty, we are very confident that we will have them completed and finalized by the deadline of December 1 to turn into the state comptroller's office.
Any question or comments? Move for adoption. Moved by Supervisor Peterson, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. We approve as presented. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, we'll go on now to Item F, Administration, and let's look at, we have Sonia Bugey coming down to the podium. What's on, Sonia?
I have a presentation, but I can do this quickly, or if you'd like to hear the presentation, it can be really brief, completely up to you. But Brenda, if you can advance to the next slide, so I'm going to give you what the item's about, and then if you need more information, I can proceed. So, I'm here requesting your board to reallocate $250,000 in CARES Act funding from the Public Health Department to Human Services Agency for Project Room Key Match. As we stand today, our, the availability of the dollars in Public Health Department is due to extension of OptumServe contract. The state has funded a portion of the costs that we were initially anticipating would be a county cost, so Public Health Department has the savings. As we are operating right now in Project Room Key, we have sufficient funding through end of November. At the, at the end of November, we would run out of match funds and we would have to shut the project down. The $250,000 would allow us to leverage FEMA funds. Now, we are still month-to-month approval of FEMA, but we are anticipating those will keep happening. It would, 250 would basically leverage additional $750,000, and it would allow us to extend the project through February. Now, how that technically happens is we currently have CMSB funds and funds from HCD that we could push through January and February, use CARES Act funding through December, and essentially give us three extra months to operate. This accomplishes a couple of different things. Brenda, can you forward to the next slide? It allows us to continue the project that is actually proving to be really effective. We are managing to shelter people who are COVID-positive. We're also sheltering vulnerable individuals, and we are, we've essentially doubled the shelter capacity in the county. What that has actually also provided us ability to do is the current shelters or providers of services that are in congregate setting, we're basically a go-to place when they're having an outbreak, when they have an issue. We've worked with just about every single organization. It also allows us to keep doing the certification on a monthly basis for CARES Act funding receipt. That should end in December because that's technically when CARES Act funding is scheduled to end, but it also gives us an ability to certify for realignment backfill funds, and that goes all the way through June of 2021. And that's critical to multiple organizations in the county because it's backfilling the funds that we lost through loss of sales tax and BLF. And then it also allows us time to craft a lower-cost alternative solution for a low-barrier shelter. Setting aside COVID and everything that has happened for the past five months, we were on the path for a homeless collaborative of identifying that we truly need a low-barrier shelter and we need a permanent housing solution. And the reality is that this COVID situation has just sort of exacerbated that and put it a lot more front and center. Multiple studies, multiple organizations have gotten there and said, we really need a low-barrier shelter. Project Room Key has really proven that even though it technically isn't fully as low-barrier shelter as we should have, it is the lowest barrier shelter we have in the county, and it has worked, but it is expensive, at $350,000 a month, and $87,000 a match. I don't think that we can figure something out in two months, to be perfectly honest. I'm not sure we can figure out something in five months, but I'm hoping we can. And with, I've presented this to Homeless Collaborative. We don't have a work group yet. I'm really hoping to grab a few more people other than a couple of us to work on this, but I'm worried that if we end, if our funding ends at the end of November, that we really have no solution other than letting people go, and then we're, funding-wise, we're stuck. I don't think we can certify for receipt of a backfill of realignment in CARES, and we won't have a solution that's necessarily pragmatic. So, my request is really to buy us some time, continue the project that works until we have a better solution.
Thank you. Any question or comments?
Ms. Chair.
Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, no, let's, I appreciate the presentation, but let's just get to the heart of it so we can understand this. This has been brought a couple of times for the funding, and I believe it's been, the funding has been denied. Supervisor Fagundes has had constituents come to him as relative to this project that he's been vocal about. I don't know if he'll choose to do that today, but I'm trying to recall all the, the facts on this. If I'm wrong, just tell me.
You are.
Okay, I'm wrong right now on this point?
Yes.
Okay, tell me why so I can remember.
So, your board approved, we requested July 14, we requested $1 million. You reallocated $750,000 of that to a different project, but approved 250.
Yes.
So, 250 has been approved so far, and then the other piece, the other funding that we brought forward was $126,000 from CMSB. Your board has accepted that. We've also brought in $33,000 from KTHA, our homeless alliance, and we've approved that, and we've approved $44,000 and $50,000 that my department applied.
Where am I confused? Because didn't, didn't something not pass where you came for additional funding? I get that this is a reallocation of CARES funds, and this is the first time as it relates to this exact amount of money that now you're asking for, but I'm trying to get the historical.
So, the funding so far, every time we brought the funding, your board has approved it other than the first time around instead of $1 million.
Yeah.
The pieces that were more-
I get it, that was my motion.
Yeah, so the pieces that were more challenging are the actual places for Project Room Key. The first motel, which is-
Okay.
Oh.
No, that's okay. Okay, I get it now.
The hotel we approved, the second hotel, we, your board did not approve it the first time around. You did the second time around. We're now fully operational. The contracts are all working, the services are working. Where we're at is, we anticipated at the time with the funding we had, that we would last five to five and a half months in the current year. We lasted two and a half months prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, and we have sufficient funding for five months, so it was off by two weeks. So, we have sufficient funding to last through November. Initially, back in May, I was genuinely thinking this was going to be over by then. But it is not.
Yes.
And so, I get that we've struggled with a couple of contracts, but I have considered it, so from my vantage point, that your board has approved every agreement and all the funding so far. We are essentially running on.
Okay, and so, as I, so then, I guess the way I remember it is that as you were looking for specific locations, that you were presenting funding sources for those. So, in my mind, if something didn't pass, then that funding source wasn't approved.
It ultimately, so it ultimately passed.
Okay, so.
Holiday Lodge was the first one. Stardust Motel was the second one. Your board approved it second time around. And I understand Supervisor Fagundes' concern. So, this would be adding location, wouldn't be anything, but it would-
Extending, extending. Okay, okay, thanks. So, now, now I'm caught back up. Okay, so now, as far as the money, the money, I get it, it's CARES funds. I get that you applied for a million. I get that. I made the motion, took $750,000, moved it over to build $5 million for the small business grant. Okay, so, but on the same side, the Public Health Director, Ed Hill, was asking for a lot more money that day as well. And so, there was pots of money that in the county's attempt to get to $5 million for small business, we took money out of the Public Health Director, out of this pot of money, his total, maybe not this one specifically. So, he asked for this money for a reason, and the amount of CARES funds that he got allocated was for a reason. So, the $250,000 that he now wants to move from his pot of CARES funds over to you, and the question is through the chair to the Public Health Director, who I assume is on the line, where exactly, what is going, what program will take the hit if the board approves to transfer the $250,000?
You want to answer that, or you want to have Ed online?
Mr. Chairman, I'm available to answer that if you prefer.
Go ahead, Ed. All yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, Public Health, Supervisor Valley through the chair. We had two pots of money set aside for COVID testing. One was for mobile testing, the other one was to extend the contract with the OptumServe testing site that is being paid for by the state at the day reporting center. They announced that they, that the state extended that contract, so that's one month that we don't have to pay for in that process, which is roughly about $470,000, which is where these funds would come from. And then again, you know, to my promise that I've made in the past, as those changes occur, you know, we will give, I will notify the CAO and the board and let them know that those funds are becoming available when we learn of them so that we can move these funds to the appropriate areas. I'd also like to, again, point out that even though we have the CARES Act funds and they have changed the monitoring list, the county still has to submit a monthly attestation stating that we are meeting the requirements of our original attestation that was submitted several months ago, and one of those is ensuring that homelessness are housed when they're positive or when they're exposed or when they have chronic medical conditions, and we have to meet that standard on a monthly basis. In addition to that, when I get in my report later on, I'm going to announce that the new health equity metric is being rolled out by the state, so I would just let the board know that, and be cognizant that this administration and the California Department of Public Health constantly changes and implements measures when they see weaknesses in systems. And as we know, homelessness is an issue that has been taken up by the state. So, if we encounter an issue in this area locally or even on a statewide area or platform, I would anticipate that they would likely or could likely implement another metric to, you know, push counties to address this item moving forward, which is another reason why we felt it would be important to extend this to give Ms. Bugey and the homelessness collaborative an opportunity to find more permanent, stable housing.
Thank you. That was a full answer. I appreciate that. So, two things, Ed. One, I think it, I think it's helpful in the flow of the agenda over the last couple of weeks, where I see that we have to make decisions, COVID decisions. I think for the CAO, can you start looking at, like, items like this that are affected by COVID, that the decisions are made after we get Ed's weekly update? Because that would be, that would be helpful as far as any, anything, everything's changing quickly, like Ed said. Sounds like he's got something new to report. That helps in the decision-making process.
Yeah, yes, the clerk and I can look at the schedule.
Okay, thank you. Ed, going back to the two pots of money on the testing, so you got the mobile testing, you got this side of the house that you're saying you saved some money on because the state's sticking on. Can you give the board your opinion, though, on the money that you have for mobile testing? Now, you say pretty much every day that at any time, the federal resource can leave or we can't count on that, and if we can't count on that, that's why last week you told the board that you'd be more comfortable with the RFP staying open, and in this case, also-
Super, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask Supervisor Valley once again whether he intends to recuse himself regarding discussions before the board about the RFP or otherwise contracting with any mobile testing provider and their performance.
Ms. Chair, I'll answer that later. I'm trying to, I'm not even talking about the RFP except to remind Ed what Ed said last week, not what I'm saying. So, Ms., so Ed, so the point that I'm trying to make here is that, do you, are you confident with the funds that you have for mobile testing that that's enough to meet the challenges that are associated with the outbreaks in Kings County that we also need to bring down? That by, in other words, what I'm trying to say, I want to be comfortable in a decision to reallocate these monies from overall testing as long as your professional opinion and fiscal opinion of the board is that we have enough money for mobile testing, because I've heard you say in the past that the money you have for mobile testing will only test, I think you said like 5,000 tests or something like that. So, that's what I'm trying to get at, Ed.
Thank you, Supervisor Valley through the chair. To address your question, you're right that this is changing every day, and you are correct that I stated that with the $1 million, we would only be able to purchase about 6,000 tests. But we did get notification of a new free mobile testing service that is not provided by the states and not provided by the feds yesterday. And we constantly hear about new services through altruism and through other processes that are going to be offered moving forward. So, to answer your question, yes, I'm confident that given the funds that we have, the $1 million, and then any other savings that we may be able to incur, that we would be able to handle mobile testing in addition to the free resources that are now coming down through the pipeline, which I was going to provide an update on later on, as well as, as we finally, you know, that gets us closer to our four-month timeline of our public health lab coming online with our testing capabilities. So, I'm fairly confident that we should be able to handle it with the current resources and the resources that are on their way.
Okay, thank you. Can you just tell me on this side of the house that we're moving the money from, what balance will that leave if the board approves the $250,000 movement of the funding?
Supervisor Valley through the chair, please stand by while I make that calculation real quick.
Okay. Okay. Simon's chair, I thought that's something he might, he might have. It, it could wait, and if someone else has part of the discussion, he can just enter.
Could you back up your slides? I think you need a one or two.
Sure. Brenda, could you go back to slide one or slide two?
The one that talked about the money coming from Optum Serve. There you go. Yep. So the state's in there that Optum Serve is, uh, we're going to get the savings from there, use that money for this project here.
We were initially thinking that they were going to pull out a month earlier.
Right.
They continued paying for it. So it saved, it created savings from something that just state paid in addition to.
So one, for every month that they stay, that helps you leverage seven hundred and fifty in FEMA funds? Is that a month or?
Um, no, two hundred, we have seventy-five percent that FEMA match. So two hundred and fifty gives us a total program cost of, um, one million dollars.
Brenda, can you go to slide ten? Here you go. So we have, um, just showing you the current fiscal year, we've spent two hundred and fifty-nine thousand in July, three hundred and nineteen in August, a three hundred and fifty-one thousand almost in for, uh, for Project Room Key in September, and it's about that for monthly cost. Match is about just under ninety thousand, eighty-seven, seven forty-nine. So to extend a project for an entire month, we need three hundred and fifty thousand. While we have FEMA available, FEMA will cover seventy-five percent, we still need a twenty-five percent match. What we've used for match so far is the two hundred and fifteen CARES allocation that, uh, your board approved July fourteenth, C M S B, SERG grants, funds, and H C D funds. What two hundred and fifty thousand will allow us, because we do not have CARES Act funding expires December thirty. So what county doesn't spend goes back to our real, reallocation to other counties, goes for other purposes. But, but H C D and C M S B dollars do not have a December thirtieth deadline. We can take our thirty-one thousand, eight seventy-one and hundred and twenty-six and move it for January and February. Take the two fifty, additional two fifty thousand in the current year and basically use the CARES Act match first. And then, so it gives us total operational time through end of February.
Okay. Does this, um, this last sentence here, I'm wondering if it opens up, um, the, the door for any other funding to help with this program? Where it says, uh, while the goal of Project Room Key is to shelter individual, individuals who are highly vulnerable uh, or COVID-nineteen positive and to prevent the spread of the pandemic, this program has also endeavored to provide needed services to individuals residing in the motels and to help them access permanent housing. So that part of the mission right there, is that COVID mandated with CARES money? Or does that part of this mission now allow you to find other pots of money?
It really, so what we need to do with COVID requirement is really just shelter and provide basic services. So food, laundry, sanitation for COVID-positive or vulnerable individuals. We do not need to provide employment services or, um, link people to jobs or documentation and that kind of thing. However, what we would do with that is just basically at the end of it all, however long this lasts, and we don't have a, we don't have an end date for executive orders, we would release people back to homelessness. Our landlords have a hard time, and I understand it, getting people from street to permanent housing. They just won't do it. And I get that because they need to have somebody who's going to have guaranteed income and with eviction, evictions being questionable at the moment, we need, this in-between time, what we're doing is utilizing it to help people get paperwork, get documentation, link them to mental health, substance abuse services, link them to primary care. Some of it is just employment and those kind of things to move people to permanent housing. So that piece of it is not mandated the way sheltering people. What we really need to do is do the basic of sheltering people, providing food, providing sanitation.
Okay.
The addition, the other, but the piece in the middle is actually really critical because it lets us, it helps us exit people into permanent housing. We've, uh, one just happened a couple of days ago. So we've now exited fifteen people for permanent housing because they can sign their own leases. We can, some of it was with subsidies, but five people actually really solved it on their own. So part of it is really in some ways meshing the mission of addressing homelessness issues and getting street homeless off. And part of it is, and utilizing and leveraging.
Okay. Okay. So, so because I've been getting a couple of calls on the homeless situation and people say, hey, this person is not COVID-nineteen positive, or at least we don't believe he is, but they're not being allowed into this program. So more and more people are hearing about this program. Is this now open for that if I get that call? It's not?
So it really, so I should say it depends. We have sheltered so far one hundred and seventy-three people. Brenda, can you go to slide four? I want to say it's four. We've sheltered as of, and your data in your agenda item is as of week ago, what's on the presentation. I'm sorry, go to five. Um, okay. So we've sheltered, so this data is as of nine twenty-four. So it changes on a daily basis because of. We have sheltered one hundred and seventy-three individuals to date. Ninety individuals are currently being sheltered. Of those, fourteen percent have been COVID-positive. There have been additional ones that end up being in quarantine, but turned out not to be positive, but fourteen percent have been COVID-positive. So flip side of that, eighty-seven, eighty-six percent have not been. However, they all have to be vulnerable. So we have exited people from the program once they no longer qualify. So we are not a true low-barrier shelter. That's not what we were designed to be. That has been a challenge with some of our organizations that we work with, that there is a perception that we are. And in some way, because we don't have as a county a low-barrier shelter, we seem to be the lowest there shelter we have in the county, but we're not.
I would understand that, yeah.
You won't necessarily qualify to have to be in, though significant portions of individuals have. I will tell you, every organization out there that serves homeless population has had an issue with mini outbreak, with having to deal with, with Champions and K C A O and King's Gospel Mission and Salvation Army, when they have a challenge, even though they're serving the same population, if they're COVID-positive, if they have an outbreak, we have been there to address that, and we have successfully addressed it. We've addressed encampments that have, uh, outbreaks. And we have also through that managed to shelter a number of people that qualify as vulnerable, but not as COVID-positive.
That makes sense. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thanks, Sonia. Ed, are you there?
I am.
Did you, you were going to look up some, uh, numbers?
Oh, thank you, Supervisor Valley.
Just the budget amount.
So was, I'm sorry, I need to clarify, was, uh, did he want to know the total budget amount for the testing site at Optum Serve? Or just the savings or what would be left over of that four hundred and seventy thousand note after we transfer the two fifty to H S A?
Yeah, no, no, if the two fifty goes through right now, then what's the balance just on, on that side? I'm not talking about the mobile money. I'm talking about the other side of the house, how you said that, uh, it's two different pots of money.
Right. That would be one point six million.
Okay. Thank you, Ed.
You bet.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Hey, Supervisor Peterson.
Um, so to date, you, you, you used the hundred and seventy-three individuals to date. What is the total cost that we've spent? Total outlay? I, I see the actuals here. Um, I don't know if that's a total of all of those, one.
Current fiscal year, I'm sorry. Uh, one point six million would be through end of, uh, through end of November. So.
The total expense side is, is.
For the current fiscal year, just under a million is what we've spent. We have spent prior to that, um, most of five hundred thousand in nineteen, twenty fiscal year.
All right. So, and that, that leads me to the next question of, um, at the current burn rate. And so we're coming up on Oc-October, you're asking for two fifty?
Two fifty will get us through, two fifty match will get us through end of February.
Through the end of February, okay. Yeah, I'm just curious of, you know, I mean, the requirements, uh, for the, the CARES Act funds end on.
They end in, they should end in December thirtieth.
But we have to meet the attestation requirements, and I'm just wondering, um, once we burn through the, um, CARES Act funding, is the, is the foregoing cost allocated in the, uh, in the county budget moving forward, uh, to still meet the attestation and, uh?
It's not.
No, it's not. We'd have to relook at that and possibly do some mid-year changes.
But they send us more money, right?
Or, or there's another federal package being discussed right now. Um, so we'll see what happens.
So Supervisor Peterson, I do not really, I'm hoping I do not come back here and ask you for another match beyond February. I don't think this is the most fiscally sound way to go. I do think alternative of doing nothing is worse and more expensive, for sure. This is a way better and way cheaper solution than doing nothing. That said, it is horrendous to spend three hundred and fifty thousand, um, a month to just shelter and feed people because we're paying motel rooms. We need a low-barrier shelter. And quite honestly, I kind of presented it to the, part of the reason why we delayed the board item is I wanted to present this to the homeless collaborative. We don't have a good solution yet. We need a low-barrier shelter that K, and K C A O is willing to help out and own it. We need a low-barrier shelter that we own, so our costs are much lower. We cannot go from street homeless to permanent housing. It just, it does not work for our landlords. We're not successful. In case managing somebody while they're living on the street just does not work. But, so we do need a low-barrier shelter. I do think we need a three-prong approach. One of them is getting a low-barrier shelter. We don't necessarily need sixty rooms. Um, K C A O has a D V shelter. They do have ten to fifteen rooms that are not continuously using. They have worked over the past couple of years to try to broaden their ability, but they have some restrictions in funding. So Jeff has agreed to really look at that, how can we maximize the use of that shelter? And we need to work on getting a low-barrier shelter somewhere in our community. For the past three years, co, independent of COVID, our homeless counts have increased. From twenty nineteen to twenty, twenty, they've increased by twenty-two percent. We have fifty more people that are street homeless and eighty percent of which are not sleeping in a shelter. So we need a shelter, and majority of that is at Hanford. So part of it is we do need a solution that's Hanford-based and a willingness to place a shelter somewhere and a funding for that. Once we have that, even if it's at a much, if it's not sixty rooms, it's, it's forty to fifty, we would be, and if it's built as a non-congregate shelter, it could double up as a COVID solution and then as a long-term solution for low-barrier shelter. So I'm, part of me is really hoping to, that to use the five months, work with the homeless collaborative. We do need a couple of board members. Supervisor Nez, I was going to reach out to you and ask for a couple of names that would really help us problem solve this. I'm hoping that we can figure out a lower-cost solution that would really meet two needs going forward, including the COVID one.
Sonia, in, in your, your, our population is increasing, correct? Are you identifying where the population is coming from?
Yes, they are, they are King, Kings County residents. So part of it is this count was, that is one of the things that gets tracked. Now, people are asked, are you coming from Tulare County? Have you lived, what's your? They're asked, what was your last permanent resident? And eighty-nine percent to ninety-two is somewhere in Kings County. Zero people, oh, zero percent comes from Tulare, and then there is a smaller percentage of somewhere else in California. But we're talking our residents. So, and.
And you confirm that?
Yes.
It's just a verbal, I'm not, I'm from Kings County.
Part of it is, um, because we've been much better about using H M I S system, even without people surveying. Our police officers really are, they have probably the best, um, history when it comes to, because they do ticket people for being homeless. So when we need a letter to, because in order to get somebody paperwork ready to get them permanently housed, we need a verification that they've been homeless and they've been homeless in our county for a period of time. Who is the best resource for that is Hanford P D. And so we do not have a, um, I mean, people certainly migrate. We've certainly placed people out of county. We can connect them with a family or connect them with better housing. So I imagine other counties do the same. But it is a, that percentage is a signi, is really insignificant compared to overall. Majority of people, if they've moved, they've moved from somewhere within the county to Hanford because Hanford tends to be a hub of services. But even that movement isn't significant. It really is people. Things happen, and I, and I do worry that we've actually, that, that our homeless problem during this period has been exacerbated. Because I will tell you, though I seem to be in front of you for homeless reasons a whole lot, our other programs, CalFresh, Medi-Cal, CalWorks, our applications are through the roof. And it isn't because people aren't doing their paperwork and falling off, because we had that, um, taken care of by executive orders. The number of applications we have had over the past several months for those programs is significant in our county. And part of that is coming, people are losing their jobs and becoming homeless when they're living paycheck to paycheck. Ability to pay rent becomes significantly troubling. And so that piece of it, I really am worried in our next homeless count, our numbers are going to be worse.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, think forward about that, and, and then you also without the CARE, or without, uh, COVID, you also, under, I don't know, the Human Services Division have the authority to mandate county spending on homeless, uh, issues, right?
It don't really see it as my authority to mandate, but we do have a requirement by Welfare Institutions Code to issue general relief funds. So when people are applying and they're eligible the same way people would be eligible, it is a, um, we don't have an ability to restrict that. So your board sets a general relief program. Uh, there are some minimum requirements, um, in the Welfare Institutions Code. We are at those. So the same way people would apply for Medi-Cal and CalFresh and CalWorks, they could apply their single, uh, singles or, uh, essentially without children, uh, couples or singles, and they are without income and without property, they qualify for general relief. What has happened to our general relief costs during this period, they've actually dropped because, because we're providing housing and because we're providing food.
Share that.
Yes. It makes people, I mean, in, in some ways, it's really a trade-off, but it is a trade-off that to save general fund dollars.
Yeah, I, I just worry that, you know, and I, I don't know what your, your forward look is, but, but, uh, you know, I mean, if we, we are not meeting the CARES Act and then under the act, under general relief, I mean, that's a, I mean, is that an enforceable mandate? Or is that an authority that you have under the law that you can choose to or not to?
I don't consider Welfare Institutions Code anything that I can choose not to do. So the same way people walk in and apply for any of our eligible programs, I don't see that as an option. I have, or quite frankly, many of us have not to follow. Um, so I look at any of those mandates as just plain mandates. Um, counties have been sued over general relief programs, um, and not following the minimum standards in Welfare Institutions Code. Not been one of those counties, but I will tell you, our neighbors have been. Um, it is a, it is one of those items that we get P R A'd over quite a bit.
Right.
Um, but setting, um, setting that aside, I do genuinely believe, as naive as this may sound, that homeless issues in our county are solvable if we can get to a low-barrier shelter and increase in permanent housing stock. We need both. We absolutely need both because our landlords can choose at the moment. There is really a significant deficit of, um, housing stock. So going for increasing permanent housing that anybody can rent for is a piece of it, but piece of it is a low-barrier shelter because from a landlord perspective, when they want to sign a lease with somebody, they'd like some guarantees. We have, and we have done this successfully with our CalWorks families and a CalWorks program. Five years ago, no landlord would work with us. We have seventeen that work with us now. We're courting a few that, that, to help us with single individuals and, um, couples. And we have good success stories. We really do. It is, people are nervous about renting to street homeless, and part of me gets that. So shelter gives us the capacity to get people paperwork, to get people to services, to get them engaged in, in employment-related activities. So they're on their own sustainable without us, and part of our subsidy programs actually help that.
Well, it's just, you know, from a budget standpoint, I mean, you can start to look at some of the mandates that the state has made. The D J J is, issue coming back to us, you know, I mean, all of a sudden, you know, we're getting piled on here very quickly. Uh, in you, in your opinion, under a general relief, um, funding effort, in, i- is it in your opinion that you would continue the services at the level we are now? We couldn't afford to do that, you expressed, right?
No. So we are, so we're trying to do a couple of different things. If we can do a low-barrier shelter, what, having my eligibility worker staff and E T S staff, we're, most of the individuals are, are eligible for CalFresh. We're leveraging CalFresh employment and training. We're leveraging our agreement with Job Trainings Office for CalWorks participants. So we're trying to stay away from anything that's really county-funded. And that has, that has really worked. So, uh, so we've minimized, even in the current environment, we really minimize the number, um, to actual use of general fund at all. Uh, Cal, leveraging C F E D has worked, leveraging Whole Person Care has worked, and, and partnering with Behavioral Health. And, and partnering with Behavioral Health, JTO and Health Department um has actually really helped. We have, when I looked at the outcomes for Project Room Key, the reason I genuinely believe it works compared to full-person care, and we've had full-person care for, for past three years. Unfortunately, that program is coming to an end of a pilot, but when I compare the population served and the outcomes, we actually have a better engagement in uh Project Room Key at the moment. We have better outcomes and part of that is full-person care came with case management. We had case management dollars, we didn't have a shelter. So people are still being case managed when they're living on the street. And it just, so when I compare the numbers for mental health, for employment, for substance abuse, uh, those were really the three main ones that we compared, our actual number of people that not are just assessed, we can assess everybody, but actually engage in services and have bottom-line outcome, it is actually better in a project room key. And I do think we're serving a harder population because we're serving literally street homeless.
Thank you, I, I just point that out as uh a very concerning number, um, you know, and once CARES Act is done and, I don't, you know, how long you can use CMSP and, and some of those other funds that uh are available. But, but uh it's going to take some planning and, and uh, you know, some efforts beyond the county's uh purview that are gonna get us through this. But being mandated to spend money to, to meet a state, uh, the attestation, attestation is gonna be a challenge going beyond the CARES Act funding.
I do want to remind you that attestation also works for realignment funds. That does not end until June. We have as a county, so my agency received one point four million, uh, but as a county in total between Sheriff, uh, Public Health, uh, Behavioral Health and us. So it's backfill for twenty-eleven realignment and backfill for ninety-one realignment. We have received as a county three and a half million. That is subject for monthly attestation as well, as frustrating as it is. But every dollar of that, we use to meet the county match. So in my agency, every dollar of realignment we use in, that's ninety-one backfill realignment, we use to meet county match. So is across the board in the other four departments. We need the three and a half million. It's in our budget. We absolutely need the match. So the attestation for CARES Act is important and that one ends um in December. But the attestation for June, uh, for, I'm sorry, for realignment, ends in June. And I do think to our budget, both are.
Yes, the attestation for realignment backfill goes all the way through June of twenty twenty-one. And that's also public safety realignment, uh, not just for health and human services realignment. Um, so we have to continue to attest to receive those extra funds. Um, we do understand that we don't know how long this pandemic's gonna go. Uh, one thing we tried to do was, in the CARES Act funds, was to seek reimbursements and put that aside for this reason of what is going to happen this spring and how much um, you know, are we gonna have to continue the testing? Are we gonna have to continue some of these services that now we don't have money for? So we are looking at that closely, we're all working together on that.
Yeah, just, you know, I mean, you start looking at the obligations that have been relayed upon us and, and uh, you know, a declining, continually declining budget scenario and, and continually uh adding to the mandates. And uh, it's quite concerning. I, and I, you know, I, I still, you know, from the general relief standpoint, I'm concerned that, you know, what, what is the commit, level of commitment? And I, I'm hoping that that, that big window is gonna get very uh defined beyond that point. Um, you know, serving a hundred and seventy-three people that might be challenged and COVID-positive, but um, it's gonna be, I think, impossible to serve that number of people without uh outside funding.
I, I agree. And our intention is really to get, to set people up in such a way so we are not, I want to make people not generally eligible. I don't want to interpret that. But the intention is, can we provide services and can we provide connection so they don't need it? Your board, we brought in, um, oh, these acronyms kills me, Hannah Funding uh on the twenty-second to your board from Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance. It was cash funds previously. Um, our agency has not applied for funds when they're avail, when it's our homeless alliance that does an RFP because our community-based organizations would be doing these services for um single adults and um, and couples. We did this time around mostly because it was a third round and there was, we were just at capacity with our community-based organizations. So we jumped in, we didn't want this funding to go back to the state. What we dedicated the funding for, hundred percent of it, because we can leverage our case management elsewhere, is for it to go to subsidies for in, for adults and basically couples, childless, because childless adults in Project Room Key so we can move them faster from being in a shelter situation to permanent housing. Permanent housing, no matter how we look at it, whether it's apartments, whether it's trailers, no matter what it is, it is just cheaper than paying ninety-five bucks a day for a motel. And that, so accepting that, we're now in a process of working with landlords and trying to show them that we can mirror what we've done with CalWorks families. And we have a couple of landlords that are working with us, so that's really good news that we can move some of people. I'm hoping that we can create a situation where our shelter solutions do not need to be as expensive as we've had currently. But part of that is the multi-pronged approach of trying to take care of landlord engagement and permanent housing stock increase and then having something, having an alternative. But we have easier time finding subsidies for adults, as hard as that is to believe, than it is finding a shelter and finding uh permanent housing stock. We actually have, I attached a chart um in your agenda item that basically shows, it shows you a flow chart of what people are, go through when it, when it comes to street homeless to permanent housing. And we have probably eleven, twelve sources of funding for families, single adults, foster youth. They're all specified, so administering all of that is a little bit of a nightmare. But we actually have subsidy dollars to subsidize some of the housing and Housing Authority is actually going for additional forty vouchers. So that subsidy piece is easier and then once people have that, that need for general relief drops. It does, and we've seen it work. The harder piece is actually finding a shelter um and really the political will to have a shelter somewhere. And then uh permanent housing stock, there is just, we just need lower-income housing across the board in this county.
Well, yeah, the people that are working and paying taxes need lower affordable housing as well.
Across.
Because the more we do this, it just extends it out and, and, and it shouldn't be temporary. This should be a, a, a change of lifestyle from homeless to housing and where they can take care of themselves. Ninety-five dollars a day, that's just an expense. That's what the hotels charging you to keep them there so they can protect the rights of their building, so they can have it when they're done, not use it up. So, you know, this is just a temporary solution to a long-term problem that we have to, have to get in the head of the people that have mental illness and physical disability. We need to make sure that they're, this is a temporary place that they can get rehab, get back on a feet, on their feet to be uh responsible adults. So I don't mind moving it forward. I just want to see an end to it because as it's growing and it creates a problem for the people that are working. I mean, it gets harder and harder every single day in California for a regular person making a job to pay his bills, pay his power bill. Our, our metric bill goes up, our food bill goes up, our taxes are going up, our gas goes up, everything, people that are functioning are paying for people that aren't functioning. And there has to be an end to this problem. And uh, I know we're, we're here today and we need to vote on this to move this forward. But uh, as long as they're getting the help to be functioning adults and accountable citizens of society, that's fine. But if they're just sitting there kicking it, waiting for the next handout, I'm not gonna support it.
So that's, so the piece, that additional piece of services, employment was not mandatory. We made it a part of the program because it just makes sense. Shelter, because we wouldn't have had any movement out of the motel other than for COVID reasons if we didn't do the supportive services piece. And not everybody needs everything, so that's where individual case management comes across. We've had people that managed to get employed while they were with us. Um, we've had a few people that are unified with their kids. There's the other side of my house that, and then finding a housing for family becomes a different challenge. But we have a couple of those cases right now. So part of it is, but we do not, we can't make people accept services. But the actual level of engagement in services is higher than when I look at a comparable program that we've had.
Yeah, I, I, Chairman, I'd just like to encourage us to pay very close to attention, maybe even come back with some, some more in-depth review. I mean, when you start looking going forward uh without the CARES Act funding and then this general relief, I, I'd like to have some information based on, on uh, also on numbers that we're serving. And that is going to give us some calculations as to, you know, going forward uh from a budget standpoint, the impacts um, this is gonna place on the county and, and uh, you know, I mean, we have far, far greater responsibilities in this, this one item. And uh, you know, if it starts uh sinking the ship, we've got to make some, you know, decisions.
Supervisor Valley made a good point earlier, you know, we're gonna support the, the bill for wildlife, I mean wildfires. And at the end of the day, we have no say, we have say in this. We can, we can put some uh language in here to help these people eventually. But I don't want to see, if we come around in February, we're in the same position we were in in September and we're still taking care of them. They need to be getting better to where they can care of themselves. I know not all of them can, but if our population's increasing, there's a reason for it. So uh, we need to get a handle on it. Any more questions?
Uh, one more question. Uh, Sonya, you talked about rates going up, um, could it be related to the EDD shutdown at the state of California?
The
Because, you know, the, the last month's, well, August, August unemployment rates were in nine, you know, really not bad for us. Um, granted, double-digit, but um, not bad. But uh, EDD has shut down their operations now for three weeks. I think they're gonna resume some time next week. Um, could that, could that have some impact on your operation?
Probably. So I will tell you, for the past three years, we've had homeless overall in our, in our point-in-time count increases. I think what the number that's more real is the number in HMIS and we've had increases across the board. But in this past, since the pandemic started, the, what I see more than the homeless counts are really the application for CalWorks, the application for food stamps and Medi-Cal. And that has a whole lot to do with shutdowns across the board. I mean, that's just employment across the board. So it's, it's really those applications that become indicative to me of um, like that I think we're gonna see an impact in homeless count when we do one in January, simply because we just had a, to qualify for CalWorks, you really need to be fifty, below fifty percent of federal poverty level. Um, and we've had increased applications across the board.
Yeah, you know, uh, EDD's had, had a lot of issues this summer. Um, they, they, they finally reached the critical point, just shut operations down for two weeks. And I just can't help but think that that's not contributing to your problem. You know, and, you know, at, at some point, we need to hold the state accountable for, for somebody else. Because tho- those numbers, I, I, I can draw a pretty straight line correlation between their inability to serve public through the EDD and your ability to have to serve them through your operation.
And I don't know how the unemployment income, I can check on that, how it qualifies.
Yeah, yeah, because again, and I, and I unfortunately only just send them over the lands, they have some good people over there with EDD experience. Um, and this has just been an issue for not just weeks, but months. Um, and again, it got to the critical point to where the state shut EDD down. And, and that just creates a problem for local government. The state can no longer function. And I think it's a real disadvantage for us, especially in the So, you know, I, I, I would, I would like to see that kind of added to the discussion.
Because if we come back in February, we're doing the same thing for more money. We can see something has changed where we're, we're gaining ground on this. And I know that you want to talk about some, some shelter for these, these folks. Uh, so you, I know you're, you're busy, I know you're looking out for us, so you know the direction that we're going. But, you know, we just can't keep coming back here every, when the state money runs out, then we're gonna be made a, be an unfunded mandate. Now, we're responsible for that, that lack of uh money, that seven hundred and fifty thousand every three months. It's thirteen hundred and thirty-three bucks per person is what it costs us a month, which is not bad. It's just that it's a hundred and seventy-nine people that we're understanding, that's what people are paying for, so.
If we set, so
It's not permanent.
Not permanent, no, it's a temporary.
If we set COVID aside, just, I know that's a big ask, but if we set it aside, your board um in July of twenty nineteen appointed a homeless collaborative. One of the couple of actions that we took was, let's interview everybody we hired home-based to help us look at where are the gaps in our system, independent of COVID. Uh, that's where some of the trend lines for the past five years came from. They did a whole lot of homework for me, um, and really for the collaborative. And there are five key recommendations across, what they looked in our county is we need a shelter because we, we have, we do not have a low-barrier shelter. So no matter what, we need a shelter. And we need increased permanent housing stock and we need more coordinated landlord engagement. They've, they did some of that research based on outcomes from HMIS, based on talking all of our, to all of our providers. You know, they did a lot of in-depth um review. And part of the reason why we hired them, so for applications like No Place Like Home, the Behavioral Health, funding for additional permanent housing, we needed to have a comprehensive plan. It's not looking at one agency and what one agency is doing, but what we're doing county-wide. So that need for shelter was going to be a conversation, no matter what, in my mind. It just, it was. What we have currently through KCIO is DV shelter is thirty-eight beds. Um, and they've, they've worked with their funding and um trying to be flexible and expand the use, but they have some limitations. And then we have thirteen beds for men and six beds for women through uh King's Gospel Mission. That is the capacity of our shelter. So whether we talked about hundred and eighty people in twenty eighteen, two hundred and fifty in twenty nineteen, or three oh five in, in um twenty twenty, which is our point-in-time count. So that's not homeless, that's just point-in-time count, who is literally homeless at the time, eighty percent of our people. This is all prior to COVID, we're non-sheltered. So we have a shelter issue. So in our programs, whether it's Champions or um Salvation Army or King's Gospel Mission are trying to work with people and move them to permanent housing because they're, they do miss that, they can't work with anybody intensely because really they're on the street. And if you're on the street, you're worried about your food and you're worried about where you're gonna sleep. You're not worrying about attending mental health or substance abuse services and you really can't sustain a job. I won't employ you if you smell and you can't wash your hands. I just, that's a reality for an employer. So asking people to be employed where they're living on the street is just not a reality. And part of it is, we do have a population and I will tell you, I, you know, I've counted of that, that we have had to ask to leave our um two motels because we have not, we could not work with them successfully. So either with the help of Sheriff on four and without his help on the other seventeen, we've asked people to leave. But a majority of people have managed and we've done better because that first shelter piece is, is taken care of.
You're helping the ones that want to be helped.
Yes, we need a low-barrier shelter for sure as a part one. We do need subsidies and I do think there's a number of organizations, ours included, that are successful with that. The other piece of it is permanent housing. I will be asking your help and for you to, really, we need to figure out where that low-barrier shelter can go. And to involve um our community-based organization and City of Hanford primarily. Though, not that other communities don't have homeless, we've been contacted by Lamoore PD, we've been contacted by other communities when it comes to sheltering somebody in our Project Room Key. So this, it hasn't been just in Hanford, but it just when we look at accounts, they are highest in Hanford.
So how's the homeless collaborative, how's it working out?
I'm sorry?
Homeless collaborative, is that working out? Are you, are you getting good feedback? Are they working with you?
Our, I think, so I gotta say, the last homeless collaborative meeting was rather challenging for me. I do think we suffer a little bit for lack of being in a room. There's just better engagement where there's twenty people in a room, like you can't put twenty people in a room right now in Zoom. Part of it is, I genuinely put an item in the homeless collaborator, said, do you have this problem? I need money, so I asked them for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and asked for a work group to work on this issue. It is, um, they'd get a whole lot of um response at the meeting, had a couple of follow-up conversations after. Part of it is, it's hard. And I get that, it's not, I, I wasn't presenting an uh easy problem and I'm not, and I didn't really offer any particular solutions. I said, I just need help. And, but I will tell you, on last, last Friday, we had, one of my staff uh was, uh, there is a mobile park in Lamoore and they were, they want to sell ten of their trailers. So Jeff uh from KCIO and I went and walked the trailers. Challenges there. Now, that wouldn't be sheltered, would be permanent housing, but part of what I'm hoping that we can look at is, is there a way for us to get funding, for them to buy them, for them to operate it and for us to have an immediate replacement? It is incredible to me that we have thirty-five people in Project Room Key paperwork-ready. And this was with help of Hanford PD, they did tons of work for us, that we could, we have subsidies for them and we have, so we actually have rental subsidies for them. And what I can't find is landlords, they're willing to go. We have subsidies and we can't find landlords. There just isn't enough permanent stock. So tackling this, um, and that's how I got in conversation with Jeff about the use of his current shelter. We genuinely, and they're willing to step in and help operate, we need a couple of others. willing to step in and help operate. We need a couple of others. So part of it is, we do need a genuine engagement from somebody from City in Hanford, um, and a couple of others, I, to just figure out, like, what? I do think people are really willing to collaborate. I do think we're a little bit stuck on where to place it in.
Okay. So how, how often does it collaborate? Does it meet once a month, once a week?
Once a month. So part of it is, I'm going to be reaching out between now and, we don't have time to, I mean, we, we need to work at a faster pace than our...
Yeah, just, I just don't know. Are you, are you on it? You're on? Okay.
And, and, and it has been difficult trying to establish an inventory, trying to get all of the, um, you know, basic bottom baseline services. Uh, we, we were a little bit farther behind until Larry County, President of County, so we, we had to kind of make up some, some ground. Um, I, I, I think we have a little bit of traction now. We have a couple of people that are interested in, in helping. Uh, the problem is, is just, uh, housing inventory is just not very, not very big right now. Uh, there's, they're, they're just, um...
Well, it's not very big for people that want to buy a home either.
Exactly. No, no, and that's the problem.
Lumber went up three times last week.
Correct. And so there, you know, when you only have 100 houses for sale in, in the whole Kings County of 100, that there's not a lot of, um, stock out there available for any of these projects.
But on the collaborative, you have people that are real and come up with good ideas and challenge you with a...
They all have good ideas, I don't have any money.
Then maybe we should look at people that are changing the dynamic of the collaborative, people that can get, produce results.
Yeah, uh, because, um, you know, they have, they have some huge plans, uplifting, uh, upholdings, I guess is what it was. I don't recall the other one, but, um, and, and unfortunately, they're, they're spread pretty thin. They have a big project in, uh, Porterville, in Tulare County. They have a pretty good-sized project in Clovis and Presno County. And so they just don't have a lot, a lot of staffing to, um, support us in our efforts as well. And so that's, that's another, um, disadvantage we have. But, uh, there, there are just a lot of dollars and a lot of communities working on these issues, and we weren't first out of the gate. So we're now having to take up the...
Um, we are working with upholdings to try, to put in application for No Place Like Home. So Behavioral Health got the initial half a million that was really kind of application-free. They came to your board with that, got almost a year ago now, maybe a little less than that. We got, just by having a whole-person care project, we got 1.3 million in partnership with Behavioral Health. We set that aside. So upholdings, so the competitive piece for No Place Like Home for the second part of it, uh, that funding would be dedicated for homeless that are mentally ill. Behavioral Health will do the, us and Behavioral Health will do services jointly. If upholdings could do the project, that's permanent housing. Some of these, I mean, they're, they're projects that are in place. I've had a conversation with, um, Housing Authority, they're applying for vouchers. Now, that's additional vouchers. They're willing to dedicate some of them to these projects. That's great. But that's subsidies. So part of it is, I do think there are a number of things that are happening. Some of it is just whenever it's permanent housing, it's slow. We don't have traction or plans yet for shelter. And I do think when we come up with some of these projects, there is, there's participation in our county that's really, people jump in and help. They genuinely do. Um, I do think shelter is just harder. And part of the, people hear shelter, and they think homeless of the county are going to swarm to the area, and that's more challenging. But I do think it's one of those things that we're just going to have to tackle.
Okay. Well, we're on item now. You guys want to, uh, have, yeah, get another question?
I just, sure. Uh, I know it's been a long discussion, but it's worth the time, and this is the time to do it. But I just, I just want to be clear that, um, on your original CARES Act, uh, going back to July 24th, or whatever the day was, um, is I was more focused on the small business grant, right, and doing a lot of homework and talking to department heads and digging in and preparing for that day, right? There's a lot of time. I was told that you had only originally asked for 250,000 in CARES funds, and that you felt you could do this project with 250,000. So, but then seeing that it was inflated to a million, that's why I didn't have a problem, um, asking the board to consider reallocating 750,000 of that. So I don't want to be confused with not being compassionate to the homeless. Now, you're not saying that. I'm not saying you are. I'm saying from my public record, and so I sleep good at night, knowing, I, I know where my stands are, I know where my morals are on, on this. We're not, in February, Mr. Chair, we're going to be in the same place, because it's years. It goes back to Reagan, to Bush, to Clinton, to Carter, to whoever. Homelessness is a problem in the United States of America, and we just don't do enough for them. We don't do enough for Vietnam veterans, for that matter. They haven't been taken care of since then. So let's put the whole thing in perspective. Come February, we're in the same place. And I think I agree with you more and more that come February, we're in the same place with COVID, just overall. It's not going away. And so, um, that, that being said, if the 250,000 in CARES funds is now just not enough, then, um, I'm open to it. So I appreciate the conversation. I just want to be clear, that's the only reason why I, I moved what I thought was an inflated request of a million.
I apologize if I implied that. So I get where you were coming from back in July. When I initially brought the contract forward, I asked for three months. I genuinely, now I go back, thinking back to that in April and May, and thinking, God, was that naive? But I genuinely believed I needed three months worth of contract, and that we would be out of this when it comes to...
We all thought that on different levels. So you're not the only one.
Uh, when we were going, okay, well, by October, there's no way that this is, now I'm going back, okay, that was not quite so, um, so I, I get it.
Yeah. No, no, and I get, I get, I get what you're saying. And, and so, um, you know, uh, the, the bigger picture is, I, I know we could break out our calculators and say, how much have we spent? And this is a cost per person, on what we spent. But I look at the bigger picture where you're sheltering, um, a population, that if they were on the street, they would be more susceptible to the COVID virus. And if they get it, then they become spreaders. So I can't even track the amount of money that is above and beyond what we're, we're investing, right, and into the program. And from, if we're saving some folks, helping some folks from not getting the virus, because they have shelter, I believe there's a bigger, uh, fiscal impact that, that we're not getting hit with because of the success of the program as it relates to, and I'm going to stop, because I see you want to say something.
I absolutely agree with that.
Okay.
We have prevented people from, we ended up having, um, two hospitalizations and one death. But the individual that got hospitalized stayed in the motel for a number of days. And we, and we had, we have prevented more serious hospitalization, because we have connection to public health, and connected people to primary care, and have taken care of issues. People were going to ER. So if you're homeless, you end up going to ER for true emergency, but you also go for diab, people were going for diabetes medication, or taking care of, for wound care, because it gets dirty. So the number of the costs that we have prevented absolutely exceeds, uh, what we have spent, for sure. And I can calculate that on anecdotal cases alone. We do not have a good accounting of that, because we're saving hospital money, and we're saving Hanford PD money. But I see it in my own programs, what we've prevented.
Yeah.
What we, but so, but to be fair, the alternative, what I do think is expensive is 350,000 a month. I think we can effectively shelter people for less. But do I think the alternative of doing nothing is cheaper? Absolutely not.
I, I, I agree with that part. And so that goes over to the compassionate side of the issue too. You got the fiscal. And then just by investing, uh, fiscally, that shows a compassionate side, because we, we do got to help, um, help some people. This is a problem. It's our problem, and it's, and it's not going away. That, that being said, it's, it's my opinion that, okay, so we've taken care of small business, and we've taken care of a whole lot of other issues with, um, with our, our CARES funds. I believe, to your credit, because you're vocal, and you're putting a lot of energy in this, that Rosel is a county taking care of the homeless more during COVID than we are farm workers. And I believe that's a step below. So to your credit, I think you're doing good there. And to our credit, we got a lot of work to do, because if we don't help the homeless, and we don't help the farm workers, it's all on the point, everything else, because you have a pandemic, and you have outbreaks, and it's not going away if we're not aiming the, um, fire hoses where the fire is at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have any more to present?
Um, no, unless your board has questions. So I had 14 slides, but if you, that's already for a motion.
Do I have a motion?
So...
Moved by supervisor Peterson?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by supervisor Valley, Madam Ford, please call the roll.
Joe Nev?
Yes.
Director Valley?
Aye.
Doug Brubin?
Yes.
Frank Peterson?
Aye.
Director Fidman Davis?
No.
A four in favor and one no. And, uh, it has been adopted. So thank you, Sonya. Uh, hopefully we can come back in November or Jan, February, and we can say, okay, we're not putting it for a, uh, to guide it through, but we're making ground to solve the problem. Okay, we're going to go on to item, uh, G, administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a weekly item regarding the pandemic. The item will be focused on a statewide update, federal update, county update, and then a public health update. So looking at the past week, the last update that was given to your board was on September 22nd. Um, regarding the state actions, the governor announced a second round of awards for Project Home Key. That was $236 million for 20 projects in 12 communities, including a first tribal project, um, of the Stewart's Point Rancheria. The round of awards will fund 1,810 units across the state. More than half of all the available funding had been awarded by the Department of Housing and Community Development Plans. Um, and they will, yesterday, actually, the governor came on and announced the third round of funding for 137 million, um, Project Home Key projects. The closest project to us, uh, through the Housing Authority of City of Fresno, will receive more than 7.6 million to acquire a 99-unit motel to provide interim housing while it's converted to permanent housing. I wanted to mention that in the update, the governor also announced, uh, his intention to close two prisons over the next several years, and announced the administration's plan to deactivate the Dual Vocational Institute in Tracy, and that's in San Joaquin County, in September of 2021. The governor also assigned an executive order NAD20 last Wednesday evening. Uh, it addresses a number of COVID-related items. One, the Public Health Official Address Confidentiality allows the Secretary of State to include local health officers and other public health officials to participate in the Address Confidentiality Program, known as the Safe at Home Confidential Address Program. Two, commercial evictions. It extends the timeframe for halting commercial evictions through March 31, 2021. Three is corporate shareholder meetings via video. It suspends the requirements in Corporations Code Section 20 and 600 to request and receive the consent of shareholders for meetings, or shareholders to be held by electronic transmission or by electronic video screen communication for meetings taking place after June 30th of 2020. Four, medical cannabis use cards. It extends the expiration date of medical su, use of cannabis identification cards that would otherwise have expired after March 4th of 2020. And those will be valid and including December 31 of 2020. Five, the Department of Alcohol, uh, Alcoholic Beverage Control License Renewal Fees. It allows the Director of the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control Program to suspend for a period of up to 30 days the deadlines for renew, renewing licenses upon payment of annual fees. Four, the California Environment Equality Act. It extends certain public filing, posting notice, and public access requirements for projects ongoing or deemed exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act review until the order is modified or rescinded, or until the state of emergency is terminated, whichever occurs sooner. Seven, the Department of Managed Healthcare. The order authorizes the Department of Managed Healthcare to assess the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on healthcare providers and healthcare service plans, including but not limited to dental and other special, specialized plans in California, including by establishing procedures to require healthcare service plans to furnish information related to that subject. And eight, the order extends the period for Senate confirmation gubernatorial appointments by an additional 30 days. On the federal side, the Treasury Department's Office of the Inspector General did release updated guidance on the Coronavirus Relief Act funds that will help to reduce the regulatory burden on local governments this past week. For the county, the Emergency Operations Center continues to meet. The county continues to take, um, actions within their own doors to reduce the exposure, um, to its employees and to the citizens coming in. I also want to mention on the state side that Dr. Galley will be giving an update today on the tiering system, which our public health director will probably mention. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to him, uh, Mr. Ed Hill, so he can give the health-wide update.
Morning, Ed.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, Public Health. As usual, I'd like to start my update off with, uh, the, the basic practices that we can all take to help protect us from the spread of communicable diseases. These are wash your hands frequently for 20 seconds or more. Don't touch your face with unwashed hands. Stay home if you are sick. Stay hydrated, and make sure you wear a face covering. Remembering that the face covering doesn't keep you from getting the disease, but it helps from, uh, preventing the spread if you are a asymptomatic carrier and shedding the disease. Uh, as stated last week, we have updated how we present our numbers on our website. The changes that are being made as our EPI team works with CDPH and aligns our data and systems with how the state calculates and presents the data statewide. And because of this, and as stated in the past, uh, there will be changes in our data moving forward. We have also started updating our website at 10:00 in the morning, each morning, instead of at, in the evenings. Uh, we will continue to separate the skilled nursing facility and the prison population on our graph as we continue to track these respective cases. Our current numbers for the county, we've conducted 47,470 tests with, uh, 576 results pending. We're currently monitoring 1,928 individuals. Current total cases for the county since the outbreak began is 4,318, with 73 deaths, unfortunately. Uh, this number does include skilled nursing facilities and community. Again, we are counting them together moving forward, because that's how the state counts them. Uh, total recovered of 3,578 with 665 active cases. Uh, currently at the skilled nursing facility, we have 173 total cases since the outbreak began, 15 active, 134 recovered, with 24 deaths. Again, that's included in the count above. Uh, and again, we continue to work, uh, hard and regularly with CDPH License and Certification and, uh, Infection Prevention Group. Uh, the state prison outbreaks, there are now a total of 3,551 cases. That's 423 at Corcoran, 2,773 at Avonale State Prison, and 359 at Sattif. Uh, they have tested 32,940 times, with 99 results pending. Active cases is at 1,268, with 2,066 recovered and seven deaths. They currently have three hospitalized. One of those individuals, uh, we learned yesterday is being hospitalized here. Again, my concerns remain the same. Uh, as the outbreaks occur, we're concerned about any possible healthcare surge it may create, and we're watching it closely. To that point, uh, we continue to watch hospital data closely, and we continue to see great decreases in hospitalizations, both locally and regionally. Again, this is good news as we prepare for the flu season. Uh, and these are decreases not only in the medical surge area, but also in, in the ICUs. As of yesterday, the hospital reported, we currently have 16 individuals with one ICE, one individual in the ICU, uh, and, uh, only seven of those are Kings County residents. They also reported that they've conducted 445 tests with 403 negatives, with a 9% positivity rate. Uh, as can be expected, their positivity rate will be higher than the rest, because they are testing only sick individuals, obviously, at the hospital. The Porterville Development Center, uh, has remained closed, but it is also remaining in what's known as a warm state, which means it can stand back up within 72 hours. Uh, and this facility is now currently empty. Uh, we are currently still maintaining a 60-day supply of PPE for our healthcare providers, and we've been able to maintain that throughout this process. On the mobile testing front, I have some extremely good news.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Hill to defer his update of the board on mobile testing program until the end of his update. Mr. Hill, go ahead with the rest of your update, if you have any additional information to share with the board.
Yes, sorry, thank you. Uh, our EPI team continues to work with the state EPI's team to get aligned with all of the new systems, data requirements, and processes. This includes acquiring the code necessary to run data that matches the states as close as possible. Again, I want to warn and stress that the state has made it very clear that the counties, not only ours, but all of us, will not be able to, I, uh, provide the exact or identical data, because there's multiple variables, such as when the data is pulled, how many are electronically reported and manually entered, and things along those lines. Um, thanks to help from county council, we're able to obtain the software necessary to create a digital dashboard, and the, and the EPI team is working through different variations and drafts, uh, as... and drafts as we work to get those, or that data, excuse me, the digital dashboard published. Our program that is designed to support essential workforce and their isolation and quarantine needs has been live for two weeks now. We've had 12 referrals. Five of the referrals were ineligible or refused services. Three families are currently being served with four being processed and to determine eligibility. We are creating, or we have created an advertisement that we're going to deploy to all of the businesses, testing agencies, as well as with our mobile testing unit in the OptinServe site to promote that, as well as through our community business organizations. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Woolley for providing us with the draft amendment to this contract secondary to your board's direction to use 20,000 of these funds to support childcare for public safety staff. We hope to bring that amendment to you for execution very soon. We have been holding regularly scheduled follow-ups, calls with the state Unified Support Team and working through any issues or any gaps that have been identified during our initial process, as well as anything that has come up recently. Happy to report that they have been working good with us so far and providing resources where we need them, even sometimes too much. As I'd mentioned last week, they were trying to send us another mobile testing unit, but we couldn't find a location for it. A couple of weeks ago, the state rolled out the new colored coded system using four color tiers with purple being the most restrictive. We currently remain in the purple tier. However, our numbers are improving, and last week, our new cases per 100,000 was at 8.9. But because we tested more than the state's average or median, we were given credit, and so our score was adjusted to 7.5, and our testing positivity rate was at 4.7. This week, the numbers will be released today, and our new cases per 100,000 is at 8.5, but because, again, we tested more than the state's median, our adjusted score is at 7.2. And as mentioned in the past, we want that score to be seven or below, which shows we're still moving in the right direction. And our testing positivity rate is at 4.3 so percent. So, again, we're moving in the right direction. As Ms. Campbell stated earlier, it's anticipated the state will announce the health equity metric today. This health equity metric is a new metric that will be used for county tier assignment and reopening. The health equity measure is a combined testing positivity rate of the first quartile or 25% of the most disadvantaged census tracts in the county. The disadvantaged census tracts are identified using the Healthy Places Index. This process is being implemented to ensure counties are focusing on the hardest-to-reach areas and the most vulnerable populations and providing the response to the COVID-19 for testing, for isolation, for support, for quarantine, as well as any other case investigation and case management. In addition to these existing metrics, in order to move from the purple to the red tier, the testing positivity rate among the 25% or first quartile of the most disadvantaged census tract must be less than or equal to 8%. To move from red to orange, the testing positivity must be below 5.15%, and to move from orange to yellow, the testing positivity rate must be below 2.2. So, what that means is even if our overall testing positivity rate is less than the 8% threshold, the testing positivity rate in the lowest-scoring HPI in the county has also have to, needs to be beneath the 8%. If it is not, we can't move to the next tier. A couple of other things to note is the metric will not be used when considering to move a county back to a more restrictive tier. The existing framework where the county must remain in the tier for three weeks and must meet the next tier's requirement for two consecutive weeks also still applies to the health equity metric. However, there are a couple scenarios where the county can achieve an accelerated progression of reopening. If a county is in a purple or red tier, and the countywide testing positivity rate and the testing positivity rate for the first quartile of the most disadvantaged census tract is two tiers lower than the current tier assignment, the county can move to a lower tier even if it doesn't meet the adjusted case rate for the next lowest tier. If a county is in the orange tier, and both the countywide testing positivity rate and the testing positivity rate of the first quartile again in the most disadvantaged census tract is less than 2%, then the county can progress to the yellow if the adjacent case rate is less than or equal to two. Previously, this was a value of one, so they've actually increased that. So, they did provide us opportunities to move at a more accelerated pace. Our current from the, our current data from the state on this measure show that we don't have much disparity or separation from the first quartile in the census tracts, so we will work hard to maintain this. I'm going to make an attempt at sharing my screen. Can everybody see that graph on my?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is the image of all the counties that the state provided. I apologize for its poor quality. The state provided this, and it is just a picture. It's not an actual PDF, so that resizing it actually makes it harder to see. But what you see here is, as I described this, is these dark black lines, those are the heaviest, or the HPI or the first quartile population of interest. The dotted highlighted line is the highest, i.e. the 100 percentile of the community according to the HPI. And then the blue line is the overall county value, or what the overall county or testing positivity rate is for the county. And I realized I left that part out. These are testing positivity rates for the respective areas. I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, but I'm hovering over Kings County. And for us, you can see that our first quartile of the HPI and our testing positivity rate for the county are pretty much in step with each other, and we don't have a lot of disparity or separation like other counties. For example, Contra Costa, where, which is right above Kings, where there's obviously a big disparity between the testing positivity of the lowest quartile, the county's overall testing positivity, and then the testing positivity of the highest 100% according to the Healthy Places Index. So, again, this looks like we're doing the right things. We'll continue to do the right things, and we'll also use this data to make even more focused efforts in those areas so that we can ensure that we keep these numbers low. So, let me, sorry, I lost track of my report.
Mr. Chair, before he goes on, could I ask for, because I'm trying, I'm trying to learn what he's saying. So, the thick line on Kings, that represents the census tract that Ed is referring to in the new metrics?
Yeah.
And then the, okay. So, what, what parts of the county are, is that representing on the census tract?
That represents the 25th percentile in the census tracts for the county based on the Healthy Places Index. So, I know that's a loaded answer. Let me see if I can.
Does that, can you, does that, is that defined by community?
Yes. So, can you still see my monitor? You should see a map of the town now.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is the Healthy Places Index website. This is public knowledge. It's been around for quite some time. And when you switch this value to the, let me back all the way out. So, and I've zoomed into Kings County. You can choose to display this by the county, or you can choose to display this by census tract. If you switch to census tract and then you slide this slider over to the first quartile, which is the first 25%, all of the blue areas are the areas that will be calculated in the testing positivity rate. So, in that, we have Avonale, we have Corcoran. We also, in the city of Hanford, we have Home Garden, Armona, Grangefill, and some areas of Lemoore. So, this is where they are testing, or they will be calculating, the state will be calculating, the 25th percentile positivity rate. And this is currently what you're seeing in this image here, that dark black line. And you can see that light, or the, the blue line is the overall county testing percentile or positivity. And other than this peak here and this peak here, they have remained pretty much consistent with each other. And again, to show the stark difference, Contra Costa, where there's obviously a wide separation between, and Healthy Place Index scores or positivity scores for that county.
Okay, thanks, because now I'm at speed on what you're trying to brief us on. But the question would be, when you say those lines are in step, does the, is there a baseline number to, that provides integrity to that statement? Meaning, I would assume the blue line, if it's overall county, there's a whole lot more testing going on. And then I would assume in the census tract, just looking at the map, where we have in concentrated effort, that there would be a lower amount of testing. Does that, does that make a difference?
Absolutely, because this is testing positivity. So, the more we test in those areas, especially asymptomatic individuals, it would change the testing positivity rate in those areas.
Okay, so I'll wait for you to go further down, and when we change over to that topic as it relates to, if you have any change in the mission for, for that testing to get to those areas. If that, if that is a new metric, then I'm understanding that, that the counties are having to meet to have the ability to open up quicker.
Yes, correct. So, there are inherent issues with this metric. One is it's difficult to calculate, and we have to work hard with the state to ensure that they're calculating it correctly and that we understand how they're calculating it so that we can, again, get our line, our testing process, not our testing processes, but our calculating processes aligned. Also, completeness of the data is going to be an issue. As we've learned in the past, the less intrusive we are with individuals and digging into where they're located and other items, the more testing we can complete. So, because of this, we're going to have to get a little bit more diligent, which may cause us some testing issues when we start asking specifics on where these individuals live. And that's also segues into the next category that the state is going to be talking about today, and that is the completeness of data statewide. The state has indicated that to date, approximately about a third of the cases and up to half of the test results reported to the state don't have the required race and ethnicity data. The state will provide county-level data on the completeness of tests and cases, and will continue to track and publicly post county-level data. When we looked at our numbers, we were only missing race and ethnicity on about 13% of our data. But once again, we're in a much better place than the rest of the state and some of the other counties. And again, but just for a point of clarification, I want to make sure that it's clear that it's not public health that is missing this data. It is multiple organization, anybody that's actually testing and reporting this data. That means hospitals, that means clinics, that means any site where, you know, this, they actually conducted testing is where this data is being missed and where we need to clean it up. Again, I have concerns because, as mentioned just recently, the more, the less intrusive we are into an individual's place of residence, as well as other characteristics, the more we are able to test. But it's obviously something, a gap or an issue that we'll have to face moving forward, and we'll have to monitor it closely, because it's going to be better for, more important for us to test than it is to track exact location, because, again, it's better for us to test, identify those who are sick, work with them to help them isolate and quarantine so that the spread of the disease can be slowed down. That concludes that portion of the report. The only thing I have left is the mobile testing item.
Hey, Ed, I got a question. On that chart you have up there, there's numbers on the left side of each county. They're not all the same. What do the, what does that represent?
Thank you, Supervisor Braboon, to the chair. So, that is the testing positivity scale, and then the, the red line throughout the chart. And I'm sorry, are you guys able to see my mouse cursor?
Yeah, we see your mouse, but I don't see red.
Okay, sorry. It's, it's almost a pink line. Again, I apologize for the quality of the image. That is the 5% benchmark. It, it does vary on each chart on where that line is because each county has a different value or they have different positivity rates. But for our county, you can see that both the solid black line and the blue line, which is, again, the 25th percentile HPI index testing positivity and the county's overall testing value are just beneath that 5% line.
Okay, so that's the percentage, that's the percentage side on the number. So, above it, Contra Costa starts at 175, I think.
Yeah.
23. We start at 12 and go down to four, four zero.
Yeah. So, correct. And the current value, as I mentioned earlier, for us, for testing positivity is at 4.3, or I believe it's going to be at 4.3 this morning.
Okay. So, that's the 4.3 number you gave this morning. It was 4.7 last week, 4.3 this week, and we hope we get it down below seven above that on that adjustment.
Correct. So, no, sorry, I need to provide a point of clarification. There's two numbers that we're held to. One is the new cases per 100,000 population, and that's the number we need beneath seven. The other number is testing positivity, and we want that number less than 8%. They both have, the new cases per 100,000 have to be less than seven, and the testing positivity has to be less than 8% for us to move to the next tier. We are currently at a test, our new cases per 100,000 at 7.2 after it's adjusted for our testing, and our tested positivity rate is at 4.3. So, it is actually two tiers lower than what we need it to be to move to the next tier. So, and again, the state's going to release more detailed data today after the announcement, but there is a chance that even according to their new process, that we will, our testing positivity will be low enough, not only countywide, but also in the 25th percentile or the first quartile, that we may be able to take advantage of the first condition that I had mentioned about moving from, at an accelerated pace, which is if a county's in a purple or a red tier, and the countywide testing positivity rate and the testing positivity rate of the 25% most disadvantaged census tract is two tiers lower than the current tier assignment, the county can move to a lower tier even if it does not meet the adjusted case rate for the next lowest tier. But I need to be clear here, it's not the overall testing positivity, it's the testing positivity of the most disadvantaged census tract according to the HPI, which in our county, that is the Home Garden area. So, once we get a testing positivity rate for that value, we'll know if we will meet that criteria.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Ed? Hey, thank you, Ed. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I believe that Mr. Hill has an update for the board on the mobile testing program. Is that an accurate statement?
That's correct.
Do you want us to ask Supervisor Valley to leave the room?
Yes, please.
There you go, bathroom. I already went. I'm good. I'm not leaving on that.
Okay. So, Supervisor Valley, just for the public record, I'm asking you to recuse yourself from the county, any discussion of the county's mobile testing program. Are you declining to recuse yourself?
Why would I? What, what kind of evidence? What do you, there, there's nothing to have me do that except for the fact that I did it once after having a phone call with you. And, and with no evidence, no allegations, nothing, just a simple phone call with you. I asked you to go and review some of the things you brought up, some recordings, especially the Avonale City Council meeting that you alluded to was a problem and would be a reason for a conflict of interest. I told you that you could get the tapes. You said you had reached out to get the tapes. I called you three times on that Monday, the day before the board meeting. Three times I called you. Did you listen to the tapes yet? No. The last phone call I called you was probably about 7 o'clock that Monday night. Did you listen to the Avonale tape? No. So, I came here, or I was in the living room on WebEx, and I still, as being a gentleman and a very professional county supervisor and a represent, representative of District 2, I went ahead and I recused myself. But I asked you to do two things, two things, to make sure that my name wasn't brought up in any matter that indicated that I recused myself because I was guilty of something, and you did not take care of that. Because I went and I looked at the tape, and I listened to the whole discussion from that day. And so, as I came here last week for the first time in person, and I didn't recuse myself last week, I'm not going to do it again today. So.
Mr. Chair, it brings me no pleasure. Mr. Chair, it brings me no pleasure to insist that Supervisor Valley either recuse or be excluded from the board's consideration of any performance issues related to its current service provider or any additional contracting needs that the county may have for mobile testing. I cannot discuss the basis of that opinion or recommendation on the record without the board waiving the attorney client privilege. I urge the board not to receive an update on the county's mobile testing program as it does discuss the performance of the current service provider and the board's consideration of additional contracting needs for mobile testing. If Supervisor Valley refuses to recuse, the board has three procedural options, of which I am aware, none of which I recommend. But if necessary, the board could take, consider and take them. The first would be to defer its consideration of a mobile update until Supervisor Valley voluntarily recuses. It can choose to accept the update in writing. And the third option is to treat Supervisor Valley as a disruption for the meeting by refusing to recuse himself and to call the sheriff to escort Supervisor Valley from the room.
Good luck. So Mr. Chair, last week, on Wednesday, yourself, the CAO, Ed Hill, we spent about an hour, good hour and a half here in these chambers, having a talk about moving forward and on these issues. I was asked to help specifically with the mobile testing events in my district by Mr. Hill. We had a good discussion about all accounts with an agreement to move forward. I spent a lot of time during the week doing some of those things that I committed to you as well, that I would do. And had a couple of phone calls with Ed Hill on some of the plannings relative to some big mobile testing events in my district, where I believe we achieved some of what was just outlined here. That being said, we have a county council who just has an issue here. And I'm tired of it. And when it gets to the right time, you know, I also would like to see on the flip side an opportunity to talk about, you know, whether or not she still has the three votes to be here. And so I don't know if you do that through a vote of confidence. But all that's happening right here is in Kings County, where Hispanics represent 66% of all the infection rates in the county. And Hispanics represent 66% of all the deaths in Kings County. All that's happening here is a county council trying to silence the only Hispanic that is elected to the Kings County Board to represent a board of supervisors, to have a voice for those people who are dying more from COVID in Kings County and suffering at any other rate than any other population compared to the 13% white of infection rates. And I say white because that's the way Ed Hill has a label. So please don't take offense to that. That's what it's on the graph, okay? So that's all that's happening there, Mr. Chair. And on that, on the three options she presented, one of them that if I recuse myself, you guys could, or if I stay, you guys can choose not to take action on the RFP. But you haven't anyways. And you've delayed it even when I was here last week. And the time two weeks ago where I recused myself and from watching the video, you guys didn't take action on that. RFP anyways. And so I made comments last week that I don't believe that that's an option anymore to, to help in this area. So I don't, I don't even see it as being as conflict because I believe that the board's not even going to take up the RFP and I'm, and I'm fine with that. Okay, any questions or comments? You got, you want to receive an update, the deferred update on mobile testing from Ed Hill or you just keep in writing or worry about it?
Uh, writing.
Okay, writing, all right. Yep, so do I need a vote on that or just head nod?
My consensus?
Except that you would not have consensus. I would urge a motion.
Okay, I got a motion to accept the RFP or the mobile testing report in writing from Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Peterson, panel clerk, please follow the roll.
Yes.
I'll abstain then for the fairness.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
More favor one abstention. So Ed, just if you get time, shoot us an email or however you want to do it, fine. Or we can reach out our own and talk to Ed ourselves as it is our responsibility to make sure that mobile testing stays busy throughout our county. Okay, we'll move on now to, Ed, are you done, right? Other than that?
Chairman Verboon through the board, that is correct. I've concluded my report.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on now to board member, of course, on it. Board member now, oh, we won't, okay, we're going to go ahead right now and we're going to shut her down for a second. And we're going to start with the CalPFA. Let me know when you want me to start it. Great, okay. Good morning, today is Tuesday, September 29, 2020. It is 11:15 and this is the California Public Finance Authority Regular Meeting. A panel clerk, please follow the roll.
Here.
Here. Here.
Peterson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
So five in favor, I'm sorry, five are present related to that business today. So we'll go on now to item number two, approval of minutes from the September 22nd, 2020, regular meeting.
So move it, Chair.
By Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Fagundes, panel clerk, please follow the roll.
Joe Nez.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Frank Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we approve the minutes from last Tuesday's meeting on September 22nd. And we're ready to move on now to consent calendar. Consider approving the inducement resolution 20-071 for I, Sugar Valley Energy LLC, City of Raleigh, City of Imperial, County of Imperial, up to 400 million in revenue bonds. And consider approving consulting agreement with ICF in regard to Sugar Valley Energy Death and Off Facility Project.
Move that line, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Nez, second by Supervisor Fagundes, panel clerk, please follow the roll.
Joe Nez.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Frank Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes, we approve the consent counter as presented. At this time, we have public comments. Are there anybody online that have a public comment?
We do not.
Nothing? Okay, staff comments? Scott, you want to?
I have no comments today, guys.
Thanks Scott. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We're going to go back to, let me know when we go back to the board member meeting. Are you switched tape or same tape?
Same tape. Making it a little more easy on everyone. We're working with Mr. Hill to see if he can stop sharing his screen right now. But you can go ahead and go forward with your.
Okay, all right, we're back at the Kings County Board of Supervisors meeting and we're going to go back to board member now, Supervisor Valley. You first? Can you come back around to me, Mr. Chair? Supervisor Peterson.
I have no comments.
Supervisor Fagundes. Supervisor Nez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had the pleasure of having Labco meeting last, last week. Approved the extension of utilities to serve property for the homeless population project related to Kings Gulf School Mission. And we did discuss the fees that Labco charges for some of these utility investments as they have become more and more commonplace. So we discussed them in it as well. The CART meeting, we approved the surplus, surplusing of buses as we prepare for the new fleet. The new updated delivery date is March of 2021. And so we are preparing to go ahead and surplus out the existing fleet and prepare for the new buses as they come online. Also updated, the transit manager job spec as part of the reorganizational management team with the loss of Danny. She went ahead and retired Enterprise. And we're certainly going to miss her, but we will reorganize and overcome. We also starting to discuss some of the electric vehicle plans for the new transit center and looking for ideas as we get into the conceptual designs of that project. Look forward to that in the next few months. At KCAG, we also received an update on the Corcoran Transit Study. Corcoran has pretty much run a dialerite system forever. This transit study has adapted routes that will be performing in the community of Corcoran. And we also looked at some of the modeling demand and the interface with both Caltrans as well as CART buses that go through the community on a, on a twice a day basis in the morning and evening. So we look, continue to, you know, work on that overall work plan of that as well as the overall work plan for the county. We also discussed withdrawing from CalVans. CalVans, as I've reported in the past, continues to have some issues and hopefully we will, we will be up to date pretty soon. Supervisor Verboon also participated in the Zoom San Joaquin Valley Voice Outreach Project. The work seemed to grow very well. And that worked, seemed to be better than anticipated. And I'm sure he'll talk a little bit about that as well as Supervisor Verboon also had some input on the high-speed railroad crossing on 198. They are getting ready to, they are pouring the pylons and getting ready to add that debt. And no one has been in contact with them as far as any kind of aesthetics or any kind of.
Taken care of.
Yeah, so certainly thank you for doing that and I'm sure you will report out on that.
I'm going to put a picture of me on the corner.
With a, with a.
Welcome to Doug's land.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
I got control, I mean, I'm going to do whatever I want.
Yeah, put you in a Kings County flag. We do continue to meet with CalVans financial issues with auditors. And that, that project continues. Dr. Stuart Van Horn announced his retirement from West Hills College. So he will leave in mid-year of 2021. And so West Hills College will be conducting a nationwide recruitment for the next chancellor for West Hills College. I want to thank staff for helping out on the hemp ordinance. We, I mean, they, Sheriff's Department. I'm not sure hemp is quite the project that it was last year and such, such the emphasis. But we will continue to work on that ordinance and continue to, and I think it's being worked on. So that'll, that'll come before us. And then roadside vendors continue to be a problem. You know, we brought this up in December of last year. The world has changed a great deal in the last nine months, almost 10 now. But we really need to get, going back to some of these roadside vendors. Many of them have, have all of the qualifications from the Health Department, but they're, they're roadside mobile vendors that aren't mobile, they're not moving. And so I would like to see county council try to work on an ordinance that connects that mobile food vendor to the physical real estate site and have some kind of that process, even though it really pains me to have government involved in the process. But we do need to come up with something because these roadside vendors are being a traffic hazard and a nuisance to those rural neighborhoods.
There was one on 18th and accident, people turning in, yeah.
Yeah.
So that must have been a good one, they had a crowd all the time.
I know, exactly. And, and one of these days, they're going to have a big, big accident that's going to have a lot of people.
Yeah, because if you had a business, you'd have to have an encouragement permit. You'd file all the fees and they would lay it out for you. They're not just pulling up, setting up shop and then people just surround it.
Yeah, and so if they're, if they're going to be, have a mobile food vending facility in a more permanent site, we really need to finalize with that final site and improvements with lighting and noise and, and traffic and nuisance abilities for those rural communities. And again, it's just, you know, part of me says here we are trying to support the industry and support food vending. I see many permanent restaurants just struggling. And then we have these roadside vendors and these more, and I don't want to always say fast food, but more takeout businesses that just continue to be able to survive and grow.
Well, they don't, they're not, they're not accountable any good.
Yeah, and so we need to add a level of accountability and we really need to try to get some, some teeth into some of the the food vending, mobile vendors and, and try to stabilize that market. And, and especially there are so many other businesses, bars and other businesses that could use a mobile food vending as part of their operation to help out with COVID. And so, you know, why we can't, you know, just find a suitable location for these individuals to work because they do have a tremendous market share. They do have a lot of people out there. And that's why it's becoming a problem of lighting, traffic and noise. So with that, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I talked about the Zoom meeting last week. It was very efficient and three days of meeting at the, in Washington DC without being there. I was kind of a downer on it before, I didn't really want to participate. But after I was all said and done, we had about 60 sites, 65, 67 people online protecting the rights of the nine counties that are involved and good dialogue in all the conversations. I also participated in Amtrak San Joaquin Board Meeting on Friday. We approved one of our payments, $40 million. And we also talked about the drop in ridership because of COVID and the less routes and try to how, how we can deal with that. We still don't know where we're going to end up. We're all hurting just the same as businesses in town. What else? I also made contact with the High Speed Rail Chairman and got the person that's designing the bridge and put Terry King in touch with that person. So we can get moving forward on that. And this week I have San Joaquin Valley Water Infrastructure Authority meeting. And hopefully we can get our money back on that too. I don't know, I'll keep trying. That's on Saturday morning. I think that's all I have. Oh, we talked about the, they're going to move the, Madera has a train station now. It's near the golf course. They're moving it more closer to the university in Madera.
Oh, really?
So I don't know how that worked, not even nowhere near downtown, but it was approved on, as I made a complaint because, you know, we would take the train up there and go golfing, walk to the golf course. Now it's like five miles away.
Over.
They said they'd come pick me up if I was going to write it.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm taking care of it as everybody else is not. Okay, Supervisor Valley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think we got a little distracted there on that RFP issue that closed out the update prematurely because I, I think there was more to talk about. So, but, but I'll, I'll take care of that just in my report so we can prepare for next week. But on the positive side, Mr. Chair, as we talk about high-speed rail, I want the board to know on the $1 million settlement that everybody, that we all worked on for Corcoran and the Veterans Memorial. So the council appointed a committee to work with me on that. And so we didn't let COVID stop us. We've been doing a ton of work on there. And so to fast forward to today, we, the committee, the ad hoc committee has voted on a design. We're working with a gentleman from Memphis. He's a well-known, when it comes to veterans monuments, he's the top of the food chain. He has monuments across the country on military bases, just beautiful pieces of work. And so we found the right person. He, he came to Corcoran before COVID. He flew down. We went, we showed him the dirt area where the new Corcoran Park's going to be built and the area where the monument would be placed. I gave him a tour of Corcoran. I took him out to the cemetery where there's a small veterans memorial. I just basically to show him what, we have a big veterans contingency in Corcoran as well as Kings County. We want to show them more than what we have here. So to date, although we haven't had the ability for groundbreaking or to let the public know what this image looks like, I have it, I have it on my phone. I'm, I'm happy to share it with, with y'all so you could see it because this is your work too. But when you see it, I think you're going to agree that we met the promise that we made. And you were there, Mr. Chair, when we unveiled the million dollar check to the community that night, was that this monument was not just going to be a Corcoran monument. It's going to be a statewide, if not a national attraction. gonna be a statewide, if not a national attraction. And when you see how beautiful this thing is and the material that has never been used in any monument in the country on this design here, I think it's gonna knock your socks off. So that's, that's good stuff. Switching over, Mr. Chair, to get ready for next week, I, I want to go through the board just to ask Ed Hill to do a couple of things next week. One, let's, let's get another update now with these new metrics as it relates to the census tracts and, and the fact that we do have to test in these areas to get an update from him. And it's stuff that I'm gonna add because I'm working on some things. I think you're working on some things. But let's get a public update with a plan of attack so we can go after what we need to do as it relates to opening an economy backup. But what my focus on as well, as well, Mr. Chair, and I'm asking it to be everyone's focus on this size, is these, this data as it relates to Hispanics. So we learned last week publicly that the 66% right for the infection rates, but then on Wednesday, when we met with Ed, Ed shared and he said that it's okay, that it's generally public if you look at the data, but that Hispanics also represents 66% of all the deaths. And on that day, I think 46 people had died from COVID in Kings County and Hispanics represent 66% of that. I'd like to ask Ed to strategically get together a press release to get that out because one, that's a headline and it's not a headline for the shock value. It's a headline to tell people this is a problem here. And although there's a number of reasons why that rate is higher, there's also baseline reasons that all ethnicities are guilty of. We all like to party, we all like to have large gatherings and we have all disregarded the safety guidelines or mandates, however you want to call them. We're all guilty of that. So there's a baseline of there. But then there's something else that's going on and what is that? What's that X factor that's going on in the Hispanic community that we need to stop doing? And I say we because obviously my skin is brown and I'm Hispanic. There's something we need to stop doing and so I think we need our public health director to put that out there to the public, not to shame people or, or preach down to them, but to say, here's some things we need to do, right? And, and to let people know, in his opinion, why they're there, right? So I put the graph out on social media and it's funny because just like the first question Sue Peterson had last week, which was a good legitimate question, hey, is 66% are Hispanics the majority because of population? And Ed said that that didn't necessarily play into it, but when I put it on social media, Hispanics even commented, my friends, and they would say, well, hey, Richard, that sounds about right, we're the majority. So I think we just need to educate everyone on why that is and hopefully that a percentage of them would change the behavior that we need to, for Hispanics to take responsibility as well, to change whatever we need to change to lower that on there. Because we're complaining too. We're saying, hey, we want our kids to go to school, we want our businesses to open up, but we have to be responsible too, okay? But I, I just, I don't know what that is and I'm having a hard time finding out if anybody even cares. And I don't mean elected officials, I mean the Hispanic community. And so I am putting in the time on that and, and I'll share with the board next week when it's appropriate, some of the things we're doing and I'll just close out that. Yesterday evening, I had a good meeting with Avenal Mayor Preciado, their vice mayor, Ramirez, Lupi Chavez, who's on the Avenal School Board with the Reef Sunset and Superintendent Sanchez. And so a lot of that mess that happened last week and, and the pissing contest, they agreed to put all that water in the bridge, everyone had the COVID handshake and to move forward. And so we have a very good plan, a baseline plan to do something good in the community of Avenal in the month of October. And again, I'll fill that in next week and Ed will add to an overall strategy so we can meet this problem, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that the, the more people have living in a household, the more chance of getting COVID and spread is, is a big deal of it. You know, the 13% of the, the white population lives in a different part of the community and they don't have several family members living there. We still get COVID, but it's not as big a number. So I know if you drive around a community on a Sunday afternoon, there's a lot of front yard parties going on, especially in the, in the Hispanic area. They love it, they have a good time and it just, you know, we gotta teach them the contact between each other needs to be limited and distanced. So not defend anybody, you know, just keep your distance, don't share your chip and dip bowl, don't share, you know, don't share things. And it happens, I mean, we know personal friends that have, you know, had parties and they all shared a guacamole bowl and they all got sick. So be aware of that for yourself and I think we can get through it. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on and thank you for working it out with Avenal. That was, that hurts the whole community. I think that Pat Sanchez did a great job putting that event together last week. He didn't blink fingers, he just did what he had to do, got the community involved.
Yeah.
And I think 193 people, when it's all said and done, that was awesome. So we had that happen every day. We'll be out of testing kits in a month.
Nah, that's not gonna get us there. Wait till you see what we're gonna do. We'll blow that away.
Okay. You know, I got, I got tested yesterday for the third time in this month, so just continue to test yourselves and hopefully we get negative tests and get that number down.
I did do that, Mr. Chair. I forgot that on my notes. My son Kobe and I, we went to the Corcoran event on Saturday that Ed had at the Amtrak station. I went, I got tested. I was trying to get my 18-year-old son to test. He went and do it all day. So about 5:30 that day, we were driving by the train station, I saw the National Guard sitting there. So I flipped the U, I drove in that parking lot, I lowered down the window and I called the sergeant over and I said, hey, sergeant, get this civilian out my car and get him tested. And the sergeant played along and asked my son to get up out of the car and he got him registered on the spot and tested him. So there's two more there and Kobe and I will continue to test every time that unit's in Corcoran as well to add to these numbers. And I hope mine comes back positively. I'm checking my email.
I'm looking for two weeks off.
I'm checking.
Yeah, I'm looking for two weeks off right now. If it doesn't come back in three days, you gotta call a number because sometimes it didn't.
Today's day three because Sunday counts, right? They're, they're doing laps.
Yeah. Okay, board correspondence, Rebecca.
Yes, in correspondence from the Department of Fish and Game, your board received a notice hearing for inland sport fishing regulations. Also, a regulatory action notice on the recreational crab trap fishery, marine life protection measures. From the Analytical Environmental Services, your board received the notice of the Tachi Yoka Tribal Environmental Assessment Notice of Project. Upcoming meetings and events, the California Statewide Association of Counties Annual Virtual Meeting will be November 12th through the 19th. The registration period is open if your board wants to sign up for that. The Public Safety Appreciation Lunch is still planned for October 23rd. Upcoming agenda items, we'll have the weekly COVID-19 update, we'll have a claim for damages from administration. From the Community Development Agency, there'll be two items, the monthly report on the planning commission's actions and also an agreement between the High Roller Dairy and County for indemnification and reimbursement for extraordinary cost item. From Public Works, a couple of items, a congestion mitigation and air quality program item, also a declaration of vehicles as surplus. From the library, they will bring two grant programs to your board next week. From Human Resources, a revised and retitled job spec from detention's commander to detention's captain. From the sheriff, there'll be an agreement for a airplane hangar lease. And also from health, we'll have the Valley Children's Hospital Care Link Agreement for access to protected health information. And from the University Cooperative Extension, a resolution proclaiming October 4th through 10th as 4H week in Kings County.
Rebecca, did you mention from the ag commissioner that we will be coming forward with the revised hemp ordinance on October 13th?
October 13th? Yeah, I didn't have that date, but that will be coming on October 13th as stated by council. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. We'll move on now to co-session, conference labor negotiator meeting confer, government co-session 59457.6, negotiator Rebecca Campbell, Henny Ring, Shay Johnson, Liberty Cassidy Whitmore, Blue Collar, SCIU Detention Deputies Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Firefighters Association, General Clocia, probation officers association, prosecutor association, supervisor Clocia, and unrepresented management. Do you see any reporting out?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time, this meeting will be adjourned and we'll be back October 6th at 9:00 AM. Thank you. And I'm going to use rest.